that can short a transformer, knock power lines down, and damage home appliances. Recently downtown Oakland had a Valentine's Day power outage. In Los Angeles, a major shopping mall lost electricity when Mylar balloons fed into nearby power lines. State law requires that metallic balloons be sold with weights, but they are often detached. Climbing a tree is a lot of fun, but it's not safe if a power line runs through it.
This tree has actually come in contact with one of our power lines. These power lines don't have a plastic insulation on them like these do that protects them from you coming in contact with them. And the reason why is this power line gets pretty heavy. So what happens is they leave the insulation off because it would get heavier and heavier and heavier and heavier, right? If they had all that weight up there. The other thing we gotta do is we gotta dissipate a little bit of our heat. Our system generates heat when it flows through the wires and we want to dissipate some of that heat.
Tree sap and rain can act as conductors, making children the path to ground. This is the last place you want to build a tree house. If you have no trees in your neighborhood, don't be tempted to climb utility poles instead. Leave this to the pros. They never climb without personal protective equipment. Their risks multiply with the number of power lines on a pole.
Keep model airplanes, shoes, rockets, and kites away, tennis shoes, stuff like that, all kinds of stuff that gets thrown up into the power lines. And a lot of people think that they can go knock that stuff down. So they grab a broom and they're standing on the ground and they try to knock that stuff back down. Now, if the broom is made out of wood, can the electricity come down that?
Yeah.
We just learned that wood will conduct electricity, right? So that's not a smart idea. And we even see some accidents where people use metal pole brooms. The best thing to do is call us on the 311 system and tell us where your location is and we'll come get that stuff down. We'll leave it at the base of the pole or you can dial 1-800-DWPP.
Once power gets close to customers, the highest voltage is stepped down for homes and businesses by transformers. These are mounted on a pole. Throwing rocks or shooting guns at transformers or insulators is asking for trouble. If you ever notice fluid leaking from a transformer, report it for hazardous material cleanup. Don't try it yourself. Pad-mounted transformers are at ground level in locked metal cases. Never pry them open or dig near them. If you find one unlocked, call DWP. Children shouldn't play on or around them. When building a fence near one, leave at least 12 feet of clearance on the side that opens and three feet around the other sides. If you see pad mounts in a neighborhood without utility poles, it's a good bet that power is distributed underground. You can't see them, don't know that they're there, but power lines below can be just as dangerous as those above. Never assume that you're safe. Diggers should always call ahead of time to check for the presence of local power cables. Diggers should give advance notice by calling this toll-free number 1-800-227-2600. Be sure to specify the exact location of the intended excavation. You're not just forestalling a possible electrical outage, you could be preventing electric shock and its severe consequences.
I remember the pain just so unbearable. And it made me really think, you know, you know, why do we do what we do and to be careful.
When power reaches the home, homeowners are responsible for electrical safety. Aluminum ladders are light and easy to lift, but they make superb conductors and a great path to ground. While painting or cleaning gutters, ladders should be kept away from electrical wires.
I was leaning on something and I created ground through my chest right at the point of contact. That gave me a pretty good shock more than anything else I'd ever felt. It was only 120 volts, but it got me pretty good.
More people actually get killed with 120 volts than they do, you know, around our the volts we encounter, but obviously there's a lot more opportunities.
Fiberglass ladders are insulators. They are a safer choice than aluminum or even wood. Keep in mind that water and electricity don't mix. All outdoor outlets, lighting fixtures, and bulbs should be weatherproof. Don't use electrical equipment like saws or hedge trimmers on wet plants or damp grass. It's a good idea to operate electrical gear wearing rubber-soled shoes instead of going barefoot. Still, rubber soles only help with low voltage under ideal conditions. Don't trim trees yourself if power lines run through them.
What a lot of people don't realize is trees actually absorb moisture out of the ground, so they're full of moisture and they absorb minerals from the ground, so they're actually a conductor of electricity. So not only is the hazard this wire itself, but actually the leaves and the tree branches can become a hazard too. Let's take a look. We'll call this guy Doofus. Doofus has a metal trimming rod in his hand. They still use these in northern parts of California, not so much in the city of Los Angeles anymore. These fiberglass pruners are a lot better option. Let's take a look. Doofus comes up, wants to trim this tree, doesn't look up and live. Comes in contact with the tree branch and it takes that electricity back down to the ground. Remember, we were teaching the concept that electricity is always trying to get back down to the ground where it was generated from. Let's take a look. It goes right through his feet actually back down to the ground. It's the same thing as if they were coming in contact with this power line. Goes right back out the ground.
In the past decade, the DWP has stepped up its tree pruning efforts. The program does more than promote public safety, it helps keep power flowing. Today, there are far fewer power outages caused by tree limbs falling in storms. If your trees are growing too close to power lines, call DWP to have the branches cut safely. All extension cords should be designed for outdoor use and grounded. Be sure to check them periodically for wear or frayed insulation.
We actually had a fatality that happened several years ago where a young 16-year-old kid just got done washing his car and he wanted to vacuum the inside of it. So he grabbed a cord out of the garage, plugged the cord into the garage, plugged in the vacuum cleaner, and the cord looked like that. And he actually flipped the vacuum cleaner on and he's standing barefooted in the driveway.
Pools and hot tubs demand a lot of caution. The biggest risks come from faulty underwater lighting, aging wiring, and pumps that aren't Be cautious of building pools near electrical lines, and when it's time to clean, keep aluminum handles far away. Don't take electrical appliances poolside. If this blender falls in, this drink could give a fatal kick. The best protection is to make sure that all outdoor equipment is protected by ground fault circuit interrupters. A GFI is a smart circuit breaker that continually monitors all wires going to a circuit. If any current starts to flow to ground, the breaker trips. It's specifically designed to prevent electricity from flowing through a person. If you used one with a faulty hair dryer, it would react so quickly that you wouldn't even charge a hair. Before installing, don't forget to kill power through the entire circuit.
I didn't want to turn off any more breakers because I didn't know if they would turn back on, so I decided to replace the rest of the switches and receptacles while it was hot. Being careful, but I still got shocked. You know that you touched electricity and that's just 120 volts. I've never touched anything stronger than that and I sure hope I never do.
If you're a homeowner and you're trying to change a light fixture or something like that, shut off that, shut off those breakers and test them.
If you should be in a pool, on a lake, or by the beach when a thunderstorm hits, get away from the water. Lightning runs to ground along the best conductor it finds. Don't be that conductor. A lightning strike can deliver 1 million volts and 30,000 amps. Take shelter in a house or cabin unless the roof is metal. Or in a car, we are insulated from ground by your vehicle's tires. If you happen to be playing golf, don't turn yourself into a lightning rod with a metallic club in your hand.
I would get off that golf course as quickly as possible and try and stay away from those golf clubs. I know Lee Trevino, the golfer, he was on a course one time and was struck by lightning. And I know if you've ever seen him on TV, if there's any rain in the area, he immediately drops his gloves and runs away.
With lots of golfers and thunderstorms, Florida leads the nation in lightning strikes on humans. If you're caught in the open, don't hide under a tree. Take the thunderstorm lying down. You'll get wet but survive. Sitting is better than standing. Lightning will reach for the highest point when it strikes. You want to get low. Why is electricity so dangerous to humans? Simply put, the parts of our bodies communicate with electricity. From the beating of our hearts to the firing synapses of our brains, every aspect of our biology is controlled by electrical impulses that race down our neural pathways. Just 90 milliamps can disrupt the beating of our hearts. As little as one-tenth of an amp of house current can kill us. If you come across somebody touching a fallen power line, keep away. Don't assume that a downed line is a dead line. If you try to pull a shock victim away before the power is off, you could become electrocuted yourself. Disconnect the source of the power. If you can't turn it off, use an insulator like a towel or broom handle to pull the victim from the power source.
John, John, aim's down, call 911.
If it's a high voltage wire, call for emergency help.
He was a guy on the crew that we were all friends with. And I yelled through my tool buddy to go call 911.
Once the victim is clear, check his breathing. If he is not drawing an air and you are trained in CPR, apply cardiopulmonary resuscitation.
Set him down onto the ground, started administering CPR. We were in a real remote location and I continued CPR for about 15, 20 minutes. My buddy relieved me at that point and continued CPR for a while and I went back and gave it to him again when he got tired. And after about 25 minutes, the fire department showed up, thanked us and said, "Go sit down, we'll take care of it from here."
In case of an electrical burn, look for signs of shock where the victim is cold and clammy with a rapid pulse. To treat for shock, keep the victim lying down and covered to prevent loss of body heat. Electrical burns can be deceptive. They can go right through a body, leaving both an entering and exit wound. They can look minor on the outside, but be severe inside. Don't apply grease or oil to the injury. Simply cover it with a sterile dry dressing and get medical help.
Knowing CPR is a rewarding thing. It's good not only at your job, but around your house and with your family members, all that, all the people that are important to you. Hopefully, I never have to use it again. But it is comforting knowing that I do have those skills.
With a bit of foresight, we can continue to enjoy the myriad benefits of electric power while keeping safe. This is Paul Sucheki for LA City View 35.
Whether you've just left high school or are searching for just the right opportunity to use your specialized training or bachelor's degree, you'll find your future with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Start your search with a visit to www.ladwp.com/jobs to learn more about employment over
Clamps.
Clamps.
Power screwdriver.
Power screwdriver.
Now, for the moment of truth.
To replace streetlights anywhere in the city of Los Angeles, call Operation Bright
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting of November 21st, 2008. We're here in the John Ferraro Council Chamber, room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month in which we're in Van Nuys City Hall. Want to welcome all of our visitors that are here today in council chambers, as well as our guests that are watching us on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live through the city's cable system and rebroadcast each meeting in the evening as well. We're also available online at lacity.org where you can catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings and archived footage of our past council meetings as well. Finally, you can use your telephone by calling Council Phone, a service of the city, to listen in through your telephone to our meetings. That number is 213-621-CITY. I want to thank council members that are here, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Labans, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weston, and Councilmember Zine, and ask councilmembers Alarcon, Councilmembers Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Weiss to join us as soon as possible. We have special presentations each Friday of notable folks that are in the community, but let me start by recognizing a group of students that is here from Jordan High School. We have from Council District 15, Ms. Hahn would normally welcome you, but she is a little bit under the weather today. But if we could ask the folks from Jordan High School to stand up and then we can give them a round of applause and thank them for being here in council chambers. And we welcome you here. And Lance Masette, where's Lance? He wants to be the future mayor of Los Angeles, so you better start campaigning now, Lance. And we also have our ASB president, Cindy Valdivenas. Is Cindy here as well? Why don't you stand up? Thank you, Cindy, for being here also, and thank you to our friends from Jordan High School. We will be beginning presentations shortly, so hang close. And we have, we also have from the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang here in our chambers, and welcome, it's great to have you here. And we will begin our first presentation momentarily.
And our first presentation today will be Council President Eric Garcetti, who is making his way to the podium now, with Councilmember Gruel and the mayor of the city of Los
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you so much, and I'm pleased to be here with our President Potem Wendy Gruel and our great mayor, Antonio Villarosa, to present to you the 20th anniversary of a program that is at the heart of our great city, LA's Best After-School Program. We celebrate 20 years today of achievements, 20 years of young people's lives changed, 20 years of putting the schools back in the center of our community. And on the 20th anniversary of LA's Best, we come to celebrate and honor this legacy of two decades of mentorship opportunities for the children of this city. As an after-school program, LA's Best succeeds. And we don't have a lot of money here in the city of Los Angeles, we all know that around this horseshoe, we'll be talking about that more later today. And yet, year after year, the city of Los Angeles steps up with partners in the corporate sector, people in the nonprofit sector and foundation world to fund LA's Best and to expand it. But what I want to talk about today is the part of LA's Best that cannot be quantified by the number of schools or the number of children that we serve, but it's the impact that the program has on kids and their families. As some of you know, I represent the 13th Council District, and in my district, approximately 60% of the residents are immigrants, and 40% of the children live in poverty. Close to half of the residents in my district do not have a high school diploma, making educational success of their children that much more difficult. But LA's Best provides a safe learning environment for CD-13 children. I was mentioning in the rotunda, just two blocks from my house at Allegiant Heights Elementary, which in the last eight years, we've brought in LA's Best program to. We see children who sometimes do not have the advantages of other students transform their lives and their horizons expand. And for that reason, we around this horseshoe and the mayor have worked to expand the number of LA's Best sites to a total of 19 in my own district and literally now hundreds in the city of Los Angeles, so that children can have opportunities to learn, parents can feel that their children are safe and being productive. So it gives me great pleasure to present, hear from the mayor of the city of Los Angeles who proved his commitment to LA's Best, because when he was sworn in as mayor of the city, his inaugural ball was a fundraiser for LA's Best, I think one of the best ever in history. So please welcome our mayor and his commitment, Antonio Villarosa.
I gotta say it. Can I say it?
Of course you can.
And I said, and I got beat up for it. And then he said, "Yeah, but it was worth it." Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here, wishing my favorite after-school program a very happy 20th birthday. 20 years ago, when Tom Bradley and Carla Sanger planted the seeds of this program here in City Hall, I don't think anybody imagined the success they'd be able to enjoy today, that a one-woman show with nonprofit status, no board backing her up, could in two decades grow into America's largest after-school program and undeniably its most successful. That this fledgling program would reach 212,000 children in 180 schools, outlive three mayors, and six superintendents. Wow. Give her a hand. Come on. We're picking it up. But there's one thing that the great mayor, Tom Bradley, and the great Carla understood right away, that this program and these kids really do represent the best of Los Angeles. They represent the idea that we're strongest when we work together, the private and public sectors, the school district, the city of Los Angeles, parents and teachers supporting each other and growing with each other. They show us every day that it doesn't matter where you grow up, who your parents are. Every child has the potential to aim high and reach for the stars. And that sometimes, for some kids, you just need a little bit of a boost to help them reach even higher. In 20 years, we've all learned something about what it means to fundamentally reimagine a community from its youngest members up. We've learned that it pays to intervene early on the lives of our most vulnerable children and how there is no greater payoff than seeing the heights of their success. Today, 20 years later, LA's Best is still earning straight A's. And now, I've always said, what makes a school or a program successful is the woman steering the ship. And here too, Tom Bradley got it right. Carla Sanger is the best. After 20 years... Jesus, man. Thank you, Tommy. After 20 years, she's moving faster than ever and her restless creativity has never let up. She's the kind of inspired leader who would just make things happen. When I became mayor, I challenged Carla to expand LA's Best, and she did. In three years that I've been mayor, she's expanded LA's Best by almost 40%. Come on. Now, in that time, we've never seen a bead of sweat, never a doubt that she couldn't make it. Now, Carla, you don't have to worry, I won't set any new goals, not quite yet, but I would like to present Carla and the vice chair of LA's Best Board, Mary Odell, with a certificate from the city for 20 incredible years serving our kids and hopefully many, many more.
Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to speak while they're taking the picture?
Wait a minute, while you're taking the photos, no, we got our buttons going and everything, so we'll talk and keep smiling. I'm standing up here because I love LA's Best. We used to be on the show. You guys have been phenomenal. You are really the trendsetters for what we should be doing. Every child should have an opportunity to be in LA's Best. Every young person needs to be part of it. It needs to be a continuing operation. We gotta find the funds so every kid, when they finish their academic stuff, gets into LA Best. And that's why we love it. And Wendy, you were with it from the beginning, weren't you? Yeah, great, 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 great.
So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
So thank you, Mr. Ros...
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Grul.
I just wanted, I just wanted to add my congratulations, and yes, as the mayor said, I was there from the beginning, and he said I must have been nine, so I appreciate that. But in nineteen eighty-eight, when I worked for Tom Bradley, we created L A's Best, and there were a lot of people who said it would never succeed, it would never be possible. In fact, Carla may remember, we went to the L A Unified School District and asked them if they would allow us to use their sites for an after-school program that we would fund. The answer was no. But we know Tom Bradley, we know Mayor Villarosa, you never take no for an answer, and he said, what happens to these kids after school is not only our problem and issue, and it shouldn't be a problem, it should be an opportunity for us to help serve all of the kids of Los Angeles. And so with the help, as the mayor mentioned, with three subsequent mayors, and now serving twenty-eight thousand, is it twenty-eight thousand kids a day? Twenty-eight thousand kids a day, who are given opportunities to not only get tutoring in math and science, but have experience in music, and a plug for my husband, who helped start a strings program on L A's Best. And to see those young kids with violins, because our schools don't have any kind of instruments these days, but for him, them to be able to have a violin and be able to perform is really an incredible experience. And so for all of us, we have L A's Best schools in our districts, we know what a difference it can make in a child's life, and when we talk about the issues of gang violence, you talk about programs like L A's Best that prevent a kid from getting into gangs and that give them those opportunities, and to see some of the kids who have graduated, Carla, from these programs, gone back or become superstars in their own right, and they talk about L A's Best and its impact on them, it really is rewarding, and I want to thank Carla and Mary, who were there from the beginning. Carla served on the advisory vote board first, but we were smart enough to know that Carla should actually run this program, and she has the same energy and passion and commitment that she did twenty years ago today, and that's what makes this program run. And so for all of the people, and if we could ask all of the L A's Best board members and friends of L A's Best that are here today to stand up so we can recognize them for all of their hard work, and staff as well from L A's Best. Because they're helping, they're helping our kids reach their, their goals and help them climb up that ladder and be part of the solution in Los Angeles to protecting our kids. And I think with that, I get to introduce, so you go ahead, okay? Mary Odell, who has been a board member for many, many years and made this program a success, for a few comments, let's welcome Mary Odell.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased, on behalf of all my colleagues at L A's Best, to have this opportunity to thank you, you public officials, who have consistently supported the growth and development of L A's Best. The mayor talked about those qualities that are not quantifiable. As someone tasked with raising funds for this organization, I would like to tell you, with this support, in the past twenty years, our organization has raised about two hundred and sixty million dollars in private dollars, city-state, and federal grants. We could not do this without your support. Without you, our program would not exist. Without you, twenty-eight thousand kids would not have an after-school program to go to every day. Without reservation, I pledge our continued support, the private sector's continued support for this program, and I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to encourage you to continue your public sector support for our program. Thank you so much.
And now the incredible Carla Sanger.
Of course, I couldn't be more grateful. So uncomfortable. I couldn't be, I, I couldn't be prouder, and I couldn't be more excited than today to look at twenty years of a real partnership. I just want to leave you with two thoughts. Our annual report, which is in front of all of you, has one statement that I think tells everything about the dedication and the commitment of our staff. Ninety-one percent of every dollar is spent on the kids, no kidding. That's what our administrative costs are, and we're very proud of that. That's important. The second thing, I am so proud of a twenty-year partnership with L A Unified School District and the private sector. You've met out in the rotunda so many of our corporate sponsors, I'd like you to meet my partner, the chief operating officer of L A's Best for L A Unified School District, and L A Unified School District employee like none other, Debbie Lockson, our chief operating officer. I'm so grateful to work with her, and thank you all so very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for continuing your great inspiration into this program. This is the combination that we need so much. Ms. Grul, thank you for working for Tom Bradley, who saw the vision, and it was a fight. We were hitting the brakes on things back then, we were falling out, and this was the way the city went out of its box to create there. Mr. President, I thank you. This is what it's all about, L A's Best, and the stories of the young people who were about L A's Best and the improvement that they make in their lives and the lives of others. Congratulations, and special congratulations, Sharon Pierce, the special representative of the Queen of England as the council general's wife. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, and congratulations once again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Oh, Mr. Alarcon.
I couldn't resist the opportunity to participate in this particular presentation. Wendy knows well that it was a group of about six of us who came together, and I think Olivia Mitchell was there, and she's probably in the audience someplace, but that came up with this idea, and, and nobody, but having said that, nobody envisioned the kind of success that has, has come of the program, that is specifically the result of the passion, the energy, the vision, and the absolute commitment of Carla Sanger. So having been in those very initial meetings to try to get this program going, I am, I am very honored to, to, to thank Council Member Grul for recognizing you once again on your twentieth anniversary, but more importantly, my daughter is a huge L A's Best fanatic and, and participates on a daily basis, and because of that, it takes a tremendous burden off of us, but more importantly, she is learning valuable things, learning not just how to do her homework on a regular basis on time, but also how to communicate with her, her student colleagues. And so I want to thank you on behalf of my wife and I for the tremendous work that you've done with Victoria, our daughter, but also as a city council member and having worked for Mayor Bradley during the times they created this, I want to congratulate you for, for my district and for the city, and thanks again, Council Member Grul, who to, who put this before the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will, for our next presentation, oh, Ms. Grul, do you want to say something close?
No, no, I have, I have another, am I next? No.
Uh, I, we have Music Week, and then right after, I think you're on, so we're gonna have Mr. Weston come forward, and then right after that, we will hear from Ms. Grul. Mr. Weston.
Good morning, Mr. President and members, and Margie, I don't know where you are, if you could start moving all of your people up here. I'm gonna do a quick two-in-one. Today is my favorite day of the week, it's Friday, and it's Pet Adoption Friday. Now, where's Eduardo Hewitt from Mr. Cartnus's office?
He's right over, right over there.
Many of you, many of you that work in City Hall may have received an email from him suggesting that for the pet adoption, that I was going to bring Billy the Elephant and adopt, and ask somebody to adopt Billy the Elephant. So I figured I'd do the reverse, and I have a one-year-old Chihuahua, this is as big as he's gonna get, his name is not Billy, his name is Sammy, and he's looking for a home. So if you want unconditional love, I got a feeling that little Sammy can give it to you. Those of you that are interested, please call eight 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 four five two seven three eight one. Again, eight 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 four five two seven three eight one. And he's got his shots and everything, and he's ready to go. Now, we do have a tradition, we have a one-hundred percent adoption rate, and I doubt very seriously if Sammy will leave the building. So those of you that are watching this on television, call anyway, we have six shelters and hundreds of wonderful animals there. So with that said, I'm going to turn Sammy over to his keeper, and I'm gonna try to enlist the aid of Tom Labange, if he's around, but today, I mean, today we celebrate Los Angeles Music Week. It's, Margie, where are you? Come on. And if all of the individuals could begin to come forward, that we're gonna honor here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's a great honor for me to be asked to, this year, be the councilperson that kind of host this event. I just want to say that this organization has been in existence for over fifteen years, headed by Margie, and every year, we bring in great artists from each council district, from a variety of genres, and we honor them for their great works. So what we're gonna do today, since not all of the council people are here, Mr. Labange, you will be the pinch-hit councilperson, okay? Because you, boom, boom, we'll get this done. So what are we gonna do? I'm gonna ask Ms. Evans to say a few words, and then we're gonna present to you the individuals that will be honored for their outstanding work. Anyway, let's give Margie a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you. President Garcetti, Council Member Herb Weston, and all the council members and your wonderful staff, you have really helped us this wonderful year. On the fifteenth year, we are looking forward to making it twenty years. To all of the great musicians and all of the great people that live in your district, we thank you, thank you, and thank you forever for Los Angeles Music Week City Council Day. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so very much, Margie. So, members, I'm gonna try to move this along, and since this is one of those rare opportunities, I'm gonna let the tenth district be the first presentation. So I'd like to ask Jessica Smith to come forward. I feel you, I feel you. Anyway, Jessica was a vocalist for the trio Hodges, James, and Smith, and she was the opening act for a one-year tour for one of my favorite actresses, Ann Margaret. Let's give Jessica a round of applause. Next, I'd like to...
Hold on, Ed Reyes, the great councilman of the first district.
Ed Reyes, the great councilman of the first district.
Thank you, Tom. Join me? First, I want to thank my colleagues for this opportunity. When you are able to find a person that can share their natural skills in such a way where they bring joy and happiness and a lifelong gift to our children, truly, it's an honor to share this moment with you. Victoria Lanier, she is executive director, studied violin at Juilliard, graduated with honors. Let me say that again, she studied violin at Juilliard, which is an amazing feat in and of itself. Graduated honors from Princeton University, received a master's of music education from Teachers College, Columbia University. During nineteen ninety, during nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three, she was a program coordinator and teaching artist for education through music in New York, where she mentored new teaching artists, facilitated workshops and designed an integrated string curriculum. While in New York, Ms. Lanier also coordinated Carnegie Hall's Wild Institute Seminar and taught violin, violin for the N J S O Early Strings Program and the Manns College of Music Preparatory Division. Since moving to Los Angeles in two thousand and three, Ms. Lanier was a program coordinator for the Henry Mancini Institute Community Outreach Initiative, and also served as a music education manager for the Da Camera Society. As a collaborating founder for education through music Los Angeles, she is thrilled about the expansion of E T M to Los Angeles, the first national affiliate to work towards seeing that every child receives equitable, excellent music education. Her experience as a professional violinist, violinist includes studio film and television recordings, performances at Carnegie Hall, Lincoln Center, Wild Recital Hall, Hollywood Bowl, Walt Disney Concert Hall, the Greek Theater, and Kodak Theater with diverse artists and groups such as An Trio, Pacific Symphony, El Devo, John Williams, Long Beach Opera, Kanye West, Michelle Dector, Josh Groban, and Stevie Wonder. So, Ms. Lanier, it is with great honor and pleasure to provide this certificate to you on behalf of the city council, our mayor Villarosa, and on behalf of all the children that you bring smiles to in Castlar, which is in my district, in Chinatown, and for the lifelong gift you'll be giving them, thank you so much.
Thanks. On behalf of board chairman, Patrick Cole, and Education Through Music Los Angeles, I am thrilled to accept this wonderful honor from Council District One and the city. Is that okay if I speak?
I can sit.
Okay. I just want to say that there still is not enough music education for every child, and there's not enough access to music during the school day, and so this is where Education Through Music Los Angeles comes in. Again, thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, and, Mr. President, I didn't read my instructions, so I apologize. I have to let Jessica, my, my honoree, say a few words. My script said that the only person that was speaking was Margie, so to Los Angeles, my bad. Jessica Smith.
Thank you so very, very much. I just want to say I am so honored to be involved in L A Music Week. Come on out and help Margie Evans build it and make it gold till the twentieth year and further. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. We have, well, I'm sure Bill will let ladies go first, so let's have Wendy Grul.
Thank you. I thought we were doing it in numbers, so I was CD two. I'm, so Bob, come on up. To, I'm honored to recognize Robert Arnold as the second council district's Music Week honoree. He's an East Valley native and a relative of one of our city hall staffers here. He was born and raised in the East Valley and attended Fair Avenue Elementary School, Sun Valley Junior High, and North Hollywood High School. He discovered his love for music theater early in his life in his music and drama classes in elementary, junior high, and high school. He's a graduate of Pepperdine University in nineteen ninety-one, and he studied both musical theater and liberal arts education while working with children at the Victory Vineland Recreation Center, North Hollywood. During his working time with these children at the center, he found his passion in directing and working with youth in theater. After college, he became a full-time actor, working in numerous local and traveling musical theater productions. In nineteen ninety-three, he began his teaching career as, at his childhood elementary school, Fair Avenue Elementary School. Continuing in his tradition, he went on to teach drama at other, two other childhood schools, both the Sun Valley and North Hollywood High School. I'm proud to say that one of my staffer, staffers, Eric Menahar, was one of Bob's students, and Eric is an example of the confidence that Bob really instills in his students and encourages them and brings them into his, his family. He recently made a move to unchartered territory, he now works as a theater arts director at the brand-new Roy Romer Middle School. He's directed both professionally and academically. He's directed both professionally and academically for the past 15 years, and he's worked with children at all ages in musical theater. He takes pride in working with his students at all socioeconomic levels and directed such student productions as You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, Grease, and Guys and Dolls. And one of his greatest accomplishments with children was the critically acclaimed original musical that he produced, wrote, and directed, Nobody Runs Alone, a story about a young boy trying to make it through the hardships of his personal struggles. Nobody Runs Alone was performed at the Department of Cultural Affairs, Madrid Theater, and at the El Poltra Theater, which I was able to go and be present at. He is someone who helps out in my district. He is an extended part of the CD2 family, but he's committed himself to children, committed himself to music, and making sure that no matter what age level, no matter what socioeconomic level you are, that you have access and support for music and theater. So it is my great pleasure to present to my friend, it says Robert Arnold, but Bob Arnold from my district, my CD2 honoree today for Music Week. Congratulations. Thank you. And you get to say a few words. Do you want to say something?
I want to thank the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you so much for being there for children across this great city of Los Angeles. Your support, Councilmember Gruehl, your support is just so special in the hearts of the children everywhere. I couldn't do what I do without you. Thank you so much, and thank you.
And now, not Billy the Elephant, but Billy Rosendahl. Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Herbie. We all know how music connects the souls of everyone on this earth, and as we get close to the holiday season, music even becomes more empowering to us. I have a gentleman here that I would like to bring up that is a living legend to all of us. Alvin Mills is the founder and director and conductor of the Brentwood-Westwood Symphony Orchestra. He's also one of the kindest souls and has one of the biggest hearts in the music world and knows how important music can be for enriching our lives. I'm not gonna go through his great career, because we have a lot of other wonderful people here to honor, but Alvin began studying violin at the age of eight. Mills cares deeply about his community and champions the talented youth of America, presenting programs each season for them. He always says our youth are treasures of today, that we should encourage, honor, and support wholeheartedly. In 1994, Alvin initiated a music education outreach program, which brings music into the classrooms for those schools where music has sadly been deleted from the curriculum. This program acquaints our young people with the heritage of the great masters and builds interest in classical and contemporary music. In 2002, the oral history of Maestro Mills entitled "My Life is Music" was placed in the archives of UCLA, along with the ranks of other world-renowned personalities. I want to thank you, Alvin, and the whole city of Los Angeles wants to thank you with the community for 56 years of free classical music concerts and for bringing happiness, joy, and inspiration into the lives of every student you teach and every person who is fortunate enough to listen to your melodies. Bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you, bless you, bless you. Just to say a few words, just a few words to the world.
Bill Rosendahl, it's a great pleasure to be here. I'm a little choked up after that wonderful introduction, but I must say, music is here to inspire us. We're living in difficult times, and if we remember, music will get us through. Take your favorite piece of music and let that be part of your heart and soul for the next 10 years, and I guarantee things will be better. And I, when I do for the children this, they know immediately it's a Beethoven Fifth Symphony, and my words are, "For peace of mind, for peace of mind." And I leave you with that Beethoven melody, "For peace of mind." Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Let's continue this way.
Oh, okay.
You're gonna put your right up? Oh, photo.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll put you in the front row, babe.
Okay, good, thank you. And Mr. Mills is correct. I was watching CNN today, and they had a report about how listening to soothing music extends one's life. Anyway, at this point in time, the other part of Smith and Wesson, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. I have known Sam Dannen for many, many years. I didn't know all that I'm gonna tell you about him until recently. I've been a regular eater at his restaurant for, oh gee, it was 15 years probably, and I didn't know his story until I read it, and it's a great American story. This is a man that came to America at his parents' insistence to study in America. He came to America to study at Cal Poly Pomona, a great university, and while he was there, his parents used to send him $150 a month to live on. He took that money and instead of using it, he put it in a savings account, and then he went out on his own and got some jobs, part-time jobs, to cover all of his expenses so he could live in America, go to school in America on his work, on his effort, and then he took the money his parents sent them, and he put it in a savings account. When the time was right and he graduated, he used the money he had saved to bring his parents to America with him, and then together they opened a restaurant. That is an American story, if there's ever an American story. And now he has a restaurant on his own in my district. He serves falafel and great gyro sandwiches. I go there all the time, a great facility. But also, Sam is very involved in music. He supports the music arts in our community. He gives a lot of money to musicians in our community, supports musical activities in our area, and is also just a very good human being. He gives a lot of food from his restaurant to support those in need in our community when there are problems, and certainly, we've had our share of problems in our neighborhood lately. And so it's a great pleasure to me to introduce to you a man who has a passion for music, a passion for the arts. He gives a lot of his personal income to support those arts and support music in our community, and is just a great friend, and if you want a great gyro sandwich, go to Sam's for a great gyro sandwich in Northridge. My dear friend and longtime friend, Sam Dannen. Sam, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greg Smith. It's an honor to be here today, and we should support this organization, especially Margie Evans. Great organization. Thank you, everybody.
And before we go back to Mr. Wesson, Ms. Perry, did you want to say something?
My honoree's not here today.
Oh, okay. Hold on, just before the honoree, I want to do one more thing. Mr. Smith, we'll stay up there for a second. We have a little... You good? It happens to be a birthday today, and Greg Smith is 60 years old today, and we have a very special presentation for Mr. Smith, which involves some music. So... Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Greg. Happy birthday to you. We have a little cake. We have a very special person who wanted to just wish Mr. Smith a happy birthday briefly, and Margie, we will, we figured since there was music involved, we might as well all sing when we are on the music. So with that, we will then go back to our next presentee, but Mike Garrett.
Correct. For those of you who don't know, a very famous person to my left, a Heisman Trophy winner, the great athletic director of the University of Southern California, Mike Garrett.
Representing the athletic department, and Pete Carroll, and a whole host of coaches, Greg Smith is a real Trojan, supports us win or lose, and more importantly, we win. And Greg is always there with us and giving us tremendous support, and we appreciate him tremendously. Happy 60th birthday.
All right.
On behalf of Councilman Smith's family, his extended family, the CD12 family, all of his former staff that are here as well, we wanted to get our boss something special, the person he has a man crush on, and we're honored that Mike Garrett was able to come down here today and wish him a happy birthday, so thank you very much.
It's called a bromance, Mr....
And our newest family member.
And a baby. Thank you, and I'm, I know there'll be some cake in the back for all the Smith family and fans, so thank you. With that, we'll return to Mr. Wesson for our next...
Mr. Wesson wanted me to reintroduce our newest family member. This is Alexis Shader, and she's seven and a half, eight months? Eight months now, so.
Amazing. Mr. Wesson, the microphone is yours again.
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to get Ms. Zine to work his way up.
And while Ms. Zine is going up, Ms. Perry, did you want to say something? Why don't we...
Ms. Perry.
Thanks, just very quickly. My honoree, Dr. Crosby, is not here today. She's the principal of 52nd Street Elementary School, and just a wonderful, wonderful person who has made it her life's work to help the kids of this community, and under her leadership, 52nd Street's Elementary School has become a reservoir of musical opportunities, and most of the students there are now taking music lessons because of her leadership. And I am going to give her certificate today to Vicki Evans, who will accept it on her behalf. Thank you. Is she okay?
Ms. Zine?
Okay, thanks.
Good morning.
Good to see you. We're gonna get her on cell phone, leave her a message for you.
All right, here we go. Mr. President. You're the mom. Okay. Oh, we're gonna record this?
No, she's getting it by on her cell.
Oh, okay. All right, here we go. This is from Council District Three, Leah Rollinson, middle school, and we're recording this because, we're sending this, okay, she's at Rutgers right now, so her mom is standing in for, your first name?
Bakiya.
Bakiya. Bakiya's standing in for the lovely Leah, who's at Rowling. Okay. Middle school, she began teaching clarinet to new school students, was a teacher's aide for the symphonic band. Mr. Johnson, her band teacher and mentor at Sherman Oaks Center for Enriched Studies, which I know you spend a lot of time at helping the kids.
We're doing it.
You're at Rutgers, has inspired and encouraged her to continue even when she wanted to give up. Introduced Leah to Stephen Piazza, I don't know how to call him, Pizza, nice man, conductor of LA Wins, an adult 100-piece ensemble, which she has been playing with for the past two years. In 2007, she performed LA Wins at the Mid Europe Festival in Austria. She toured Eastern Europe, performed New Orleans after Katrina. Last LA Wins performance before college was accompanying the great Fourth of July fireworks extravaganza at Warner Center Park. Currently a music education major at Rutgers University, her passion is music, her gift is teaching. In fifth grade, she realized her passion for music, picked up the clarinet at Sherman Oaks Center for Enriched Studies, has loved playing it ever since that day. Musical abilities, in addition to musical abilities, vocal accomplishments, is a first soprano, performed at the Church of the Wake Choir, including Los Angeles Fallen Police Officer's Memorial Ceremony. Says the greatest impact she can have on students will come out of remaining teachable herself. Her experiences at Sherman Oaks Center for Enriched Studies, the LA Wins, and her involvement in the community of Los Angeles have completely shaped her life and set her on a course of her chosen profession. She hopes to return to Los Angeles as a music teacher with the Los Angeles Unified School District, and we have a presentation for your lovely daughter, and I remember seeing her a few times, and you're a great mom to see, make sure things were done properly, and a couple words from you, so darling, you deserve this. There you go. Here's your mom.
I just want to say thank you to Councilman Zine. He's always been a wonderful supporter of the local public schools, especially at Sosis. We dragged him out many a times.
Yes, you did.
And we love you for it. Also, I'd like to have this opportunity to say, LAUSD has wonderful, wonderful opportunities for our young people, and I encourage people in Los Angeles to support our local public schools, whether or not you have children there currently. Go out, volunteer, and be a part of the community. Thank you.
At this time, and that was so sweet, Ms. Zine, to record it so that the daughter could actually hear it. Now, we'd like to have Mr. Parks from the Great Eighth District come forward. Councilman Benar Parks.
Thank you very much, and we have a very special guest today, a young man that we've worked with for the last three or four years, Fernando Pullum. He's the director of arts over at our View Park Prep High School, one that we're so proud of that is in the top 5% of the state as it relates to their academics. But what we have today is a young man that has been an educator in South Los Angeles for over 20 years. He's been a recipient of many awards, but one that I'd like to highlight is that he was, had received the National Music Teacher of the Year Award early on. He also has been featured on The Oprah Show. He also has his students involved in a number of activities. His students have participated and performed at the Playboy Jazz Festival. They've also recorded CDs. They performed with Jackson Brown, Lionel Hampton, Whitney Marcellus, Buddy Collette, James Carter, Gerald Albright, Al Jarreau, and Stevie Wonder. Most recently, they just returned from a two-week trip in Brazil, learning about music and also performing. Mr. Pullum has his bachelor's and master's degree from the University of Michigan, but I think also what's important is his own personal credentials, where he has also recorded with Ella Fitzgerald, Cab Calloway, Stevie Wonder, Alicia Keys, Lalo Safran, Etta James, and many others. And if I understand it correctly, he will be appearing on the American Music Awards this Sunday to perform, and so I just would like to highlight him. If you have any opportunity to go out and see the stage productions at the View Park Prep, if you have any opportunity to go out and see these young people that he takes under his wing and gives him other opportunities, it's well worth your time to see some new stars of the future that come out of this community, and I wanted to congratulate Fernando for all the work that he's doing.
On behalf of the students of the ISF Public Schools, I'd like to thank Councilman Parks for his continued support. We are endeavoring to do things that are much larger than music. We are trying to change the community. Our model is we're going to change South Los Angeles one household at a time. On weekends, we teach free lessons at 5701 South Crenshaw to anyone that's willing to come, and last summer, we taught 500 kids per day free lessons with very limited funding. This year, we hope to play in Cuba. Last, two weeks ago, we did a concert with Jackson Brown, Smokey Robinson. I don't know I can forget Smokey Robinson's name because he's a legend, but we're trying to make these kids, I'm trying to turn my kids into heroes so the other little kids in the community can look up to them rather than look at gang members. So thank you for your continued support. Thank you very much.
And now, if I could ask for Councilmember, former Senator Richard Alacon to come forward.
First of all, let me thank Councilmember Wesson, because this is a really cool recognition. Los Angeles has produced some of the greatest talent in the history of humankind, and I know that because of the people that are being recognized, we're gonna continue with that legacy. It's my honor to recognize somebody who has had tremendous impact on Pacoima Middle School. In fact, a lot of people, whatever you think about Pacoima, one thing you don't know about Pacoima is it has one of the best performing arts magnet schools in the entire world, and part of the reason for that is that Dr. Scott Mandell is directing their musical programs, and particularly, the choir program. So I am glad to join today to in honoring Dr. Mandell. He has been directing the Pacoima Singers, a youth musical group consisting of seventh and eighth graders at Pacoima Middle School, television, theater, and performing arts magnet for the last 15 years. The Pacoima Singers is not a typical choir. They're a dedicated group of young people who have strong voices and are disciplined about their performances. The Pacoima Singers are an award-winning, multi-ethnic performing arts group at Pacoima Middle School. Middle School, a magnet in the San Fernando Valley. The singing and dancing group consists of 37th and eighth graders who come from all over Los Angeles. In fact, the kids clamor to get into this program. The group ages are 12 to 14, and they've already earned an excellent reputation, performing for many dignitaries, including the first, former First Lady, soon-to-be Secretary of State Hillary Clinton. The group regularly performs around the city for important community, and very soon, they're going to be traveling to DC if they can get the $40,000. So on Channel 35, I'm making a plug, please donate money so these kids can go perform in Washington, DC. Dr. Mandell's appreciation and love of musical theater shines through with every performance of the Pacoima Singers. Dr. Mandell is a National Board Certified Teacher, which is a particular pleasure for me, because I wrote the legislation to expand the National Board Certification Program in the state of California. And we've increased the numbers by literally hundreds of teachers who are now National Board Certified. It was under the impetus of former Governor Gray Davis, who provided cash incentives for teachers to get their National Board Certification, and I carried the legislation. And so I'm very proud that Dr. Mandell was able to take advantage of that. Bottom line is, National Board Certified teachers are the best in the country, and we're honored that he has become one. So he has worked as a teacher administrator and in-service leader for more than 25 years. He has authored 11 teacher education books, which all have been published with the intent to assist teachers become more effective in the classroom. Dr. Mandell received his PhD in curriculum and instruction from Mr. Smith's School of Honor at the University of Southern California. I was getting confused, because I was thinking about the man lover, whatever that was. His master's in education from the University of Judaism, and his BA in education from Ohio State University, which I believe is where he hails from.
Yes.
And Cleveland. So I'm honored to recognize Dr. Mandell for his dedication and commitment to promoting the art of music and for instilling the appreciation of music into his students and their families, but most importantly, because he is teaching kids to love school through music. And with that, it's my pleasure to present this on behalf of the City Council to Dr. Scott Mandell.
I want to thank the City Council for this honor. I have my students right over here, because... To be very honest, I'm nothing without them. These programs such as ours at Pacoima Middle School Television Theater Performing Arts Magnet are truly one of the gems of Los Angeles Unified School District. And we don't get enough recognition for that, these phenomenal kids that we have in our city. These kids especially are going through a special adversarial position this year, because we have a 50-year-old auditorium with a professional sound system and professional lighting that was destroyed by an arsonist a couple of years, a couple of months ago. And they are going to be having to go out or outside to find places to perform for the next three years until our auditorium is repaired. So anything that we can get from you to speed up the process, we would, these kids would really appreciate. But thank you very much for this honor. And we are the home of Richie Valens.
At this time, if I could have Councilmember Weiss come forward, and I think it would be appropriate for Bill Rosenthal, Bill Rosenthal to come forward. He has a very special connection with the next young man that we're going to honor.
All right, thank you for joining us, Bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce you to Raymundo Viscara, who is the director of the marching band at Fairfax High. And after only one year back at Fairfax, as a first-year teacher, the Fairfax Marching Lions placed second at the state championships and placed first in the L.A. School District's Division One Band and Drill Championships. Raymundo has really brought new vitality and life and real excitement to Fairfax High's music program. He has a lot of friends and supporters from Fairfax who are with us today. Thank you for coming. And I think some of you may recognize his husband, who is standing behind me, Jeff Prang, who's a good friend of all of ours. So I want to ask you to join me in congratulating Raymundo, but before that, Bill, you're on, man.
Thank you, colleague Jack Weiss. And Jack and I on Saturday spoke at the No on Eight Rally down at City Hall. There were 14,000 people there. Wendy Grul was there as well, and many other colleagues shared their support of the event. This was a no on eight. You know why? Because civil marriage is something for everyone, straight and gay and whatever, because it's a civil rights issue. You can take whatever you want to your church, but a civil marriage should be mandatory. I had the privilege and the opportunity to officiate at the wedding of Ray and Jeff on October 23rd, which is a little over four weeks ago. The mayor, right here, of West Hollywood, okay, and his spouse, the first gentleman of the city of West Hollywood, Ray and Jeff. And I say that let no one break up their union, no matter what court action or whatever happens, this is a civil rights issue, and bless you two for sharing your lives together. And thank you, Mr. Weiss, for letting me get up.
Well, that's good. As you can tell... That was a very good reason to have Bill Rosenthal come up and speak. That's a special story. All right, let's hear it for the man himself, Raymundo.
I mean, everything he says is special. But I thought that was...
The educator who brought music back to Fairfax High School, the educator who put a band together. You know, we all fight for sports and all that stuff, but it's a combination of not just athletics, but the humanities, and music is the humanities. I'm proud of the marching band. I'm proud of what Jack Weiss has done to help Fairfax, which has a great program there, the lights on the field now, the great city championship with their basketball team. All of that goes together. But the band director brings everybody together, that music is so important. So Raymundo, I congratulate you and the Lions of Fairfax High, of which Julian Harris Calvin, my deputy, went to Fairfax.
Thank you very much, Council. It's funny that you mentioned sports. If I don't have any music advocates here, I hope to make some more right now. They're only, not to have anything against sports, sports are great for kids, but you can only put a certain number of students on a team. Music, especially in marching band, is all-inclusive, and we take as many as we can get. The more kids off the streets, the better. And I really follow this ideal. If a kid is willing and able to be at all rehearsals, I'll do my very best to make sure that they attempt or even play a nice little tune on an instrument. And I'd like to share one quick story with you. When I first got to Fairfax, something was a little new to me. Well, I grew up in South LA, so it's not that new, but as a teacher, I didn't think I would encounter this. I had one student say, oh, I have to be excused for a few minutes, I have to call my parole officer. I said, what? What is that? And so anyway, this kid was with me the whole summer, along with the other kids when I first started at Fairfax, because we literally had to practice every day. I had to teach note by note in order to get them ready for that first year. And this student, I told him, okay, you have to get really good grades to be in band. This student ended up getting pretty much close to straight A's, and sadly, I ended up losing him to the football team later, but by then, I had helped him out. I feel that by him being in band, he knew how important it was for him to have good grades to be in the band, and he's still getting good grades now. He's no longer in the band, but he's doing really good in school, and he's set to graduate this year. So those are the stories that are out there. Those are stories that music really helps for, not just the talented kids, but the kids that could benefit from being off the streets and getting out of trouble. And thank you so much, and I'd like to thank one of my principals, Dave Seidelman, for being here and supporting us at Fairfax. And one of our very big supporters of the school, not just the band, and we have orchestra as well, is my husband, Jeff Prang. He helps out a lot with the band music department. He is a band person himself, too, so thank you.
Mr. Labange for the last two presentations after the photograph.
Why don't you go on the other side there?
First gentleman.
I want to thank you. Let's give Margie Evans a big hand again, right there. We're coming right up here. And I know, you know, sometimes when you're sick, when you're a kid, you know what you watch? You watch Romper Room, and I'm looking out for our friend from the 15th. She's not feeling well today. But we send our love to Janice Hahn. She has a very special representative there. As we all know, our council districts, Mr. Weston, but some of us know our parishes, and we have someone who's very special from the 15th District. Donna Barnes, I got that right, Donna, right there. This is for you, for your commitment to the children, to give an opportunity to broaden their horizons and achieve full potential through music. The music is so important. I want to present that to you on behalf of Ms. Hahn and the mayor. I want to personally thank you, because it's your parish that you were involved in that helps you, is a work at Holy Trinity in San Pedro. And when you bring, whether it is, and I do believe in the Constitution of the United States and the separation of church and state, but not church and community. And when you bring all you can to teach about music, you make a difference in their lives. You make a difference in their lives. So on behalf of Janice Hahn, I want to thank you, a great graduate of Cal State Dominguez Hills, which is so important. She's been involved with this very special music program, and I want you to tell us just a little bit more from the heart. Give her a big hand, Donna Barnes.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege to lead the worship at Holy Trinity Parish through music, and I am just very humbled to be among such esteemed company as my fellow honorees. Thank you very much.
Donna, that's so well said. On behalf of Ms. Hahn, her staff wants to present you these beautiful flowers. What a beautiful thing. Dolores. Janice Hahn loves you, and that's the key. Thank you very much. Give Donna a big hand. Also, my special honoree, Carrie Walsh, who's a great, great singer, is on assignment in Indonesia right now. We want to salute her as well. I'll make this presentation, but give Carrie Walsh a big hand right there for her work. Sonia Marie de Leon is this very special, special honoree from the 14th District. Give her a big hand right now. A woman of distinction and creativity force, has influenced throughout Southern California, the United States, the first woman in history to receive a Vatican invitation to conduct the Civvy Orchestra at the Papal Mass. That deserves an honor right there as well. Give her a hand for that. Very special in her work throughout, and the music here, outstanding Latina of the Year in 2000, one of the most influential Hispanics in the United States, not just in 2001 and 2005, but I'm going to say 2008. Let's give you a big hand right here for the great work you do for the Santa Cecilia Orchestra. Congratulations.
On behalf of the orchestra, thank you very much, Councilman. I went to high school in your district. Hollywood Academy. And thanks to Councilman Wizar for nominating us, as well as many other council members. One of our strongest partners in bringing music to communities is Councilman Garcetti, so thank you very much for that, Councilman Garcetti. And I'd really like to thank Margie Evans for organizing these wonderful awards. I'm so moved by hearing everyone's story here, conductors and teachers and organizations working so hard to bring music into communities, to celebrate the power, the beauty, and inspiration that music could bring into children's lives. This has been a great week for us. We just had our opening season concert, the Alma Latina, in Eagle Rock at Occidental College, with 1,000 children and families in attendance, listening to a free concert in their very own community. We go to 16 schools a year with a free music program and put violence in the hands of over 200 children throughout the last year, over 600 children with free violin lessons. Thank you for this great celebration, and what a great morning it has been here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. It is all about the humanity. It is all about music and appreciation. Congratulations. Let's give them all a big hand and recognize. And Mr. Weston, we thank you for your help in this effort here. So on behalf of that, I want to congratulate everybody for this very special music of appreciation. And Mr. President, as you call the next person up here, we shift gears, we have someone from England right here I want to recognize. Harry Briggs is here with our Bureau of Sanitation. Give Harry a big hand. He's a tall guy. Thanks, Harry. You're welcome. Here we go. Just say hello.
Hello, Dan. I'd just like to thank the people of the City of Los Angeles for hosting me this week.
All right, we got a translation in English? Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. If we can call the roll, and our next presentation will come from Ms. Grul, but let's call the roll real quick.
Alacon Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Wizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a call, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Joyce, come up here next to me. I have such an honor today to congratulate, with a little, you know, sadness as well, but to congratulate Joyce Perkins on her retirement as the co-founder and executive director of Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, what we finally know as Lonnie in the city of Los Angeles. Joyce helped start Lonnie with Mayor Riordan in 1994 as a private nonprofit organization engaged in the economic revitalization of challenged urban neighborhoods. She has helped make the vision of Lonnie a reality. She helped Lonnie become a liaison between the communities and government to try to figure out how to improve their neighborhoods, and to help work with city departments to help expedite many of those development projects. She is truly an example of a great leader. She has led Lonnie in its service over 21 diverse communities throughout the city of Los Angeles, providing community consensus, building transit corridor improvements, business district revitalization, urban greening, and the development and support of community organizations. She helped create Lonnie's nationally recognized community engagement model, which promotes leadership development and truly, excuse me, and truly helped our city's communities to work and invest in their own communities. Joyce brought the private sector and the public and nonprofit sector to experience the work that she was doing at Lonnie. She's worked in land use and transportation and public policy and organizational development. Pretty much, she just gets things done, which is very, very important. A little bit of history, she earned a liberal arts degree in social welfare with emphasis in communications from the San Francisco State University. Worked as a social worker at the L.A. County Department of Public Social Services, serving abused and ill-looked children, and as a real estate owner, excuse me, agent, and later as the owner and operator of a word processing company. She was a stay-at-home mom for a while and took care of her two wonderful kids, Paul Jr. and Justin, and became actively involved, which is a full-time job with your kids' schools. Her community involvement has continued over the years, where she served on numerous boards and commissions, which, there's a long list here, as I was reading it earlier. Former vice chair of BZA, chair of the West Adams Community Plan Advisory Committee, worked on the Crenshaw Specific Plan, 8th District and 48th Assembly District Empowerment Councils, Metro West Side Central Sector Council, member of the L.A. County Joint Transportation and Land Use Policy Implementation Committee. She serves on the vice chair of the Environmental Affairs Commission, Crenshaw Redevelopment Community Advisory Committee, Expo Line, Crenshaw Corridor Design, and numerous things that she's been honored from every level of government for her incredible accomplishments. And in 1999, she was named by the Los Angeles Times as number 32 of the 103 most influential people in the greater Los Angeles area. And so it is really my pleasure to be able to recognize Joyce Perkins for her leadership and foresight and vision on the issues impacting our quality of life in our neighborhoods, and as I said, as someone who gets things done. So it is my pleasure to present to Joyce Perkins this resolution from the entire City Council and mayor and comptroller and city attorney to thank you for your years of service here in the city of Los Angeles. If you could give her a great round of applause. Thank you, Joyce.
And I'd like to call on Mr. Parks to say a couple words. Mr. Parks? Did you press your button on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Joyce, I want to just say thank you for all the things you're doing, but really thank you for not retiring and leaving. That's the important thing, that you're going to be around. But one of the things we wanted to add to this presentation today, and we are going to name the parkway that's at La Mert Park, where you built the gateway into La Mert Park in honor of Joyce Perkins. And so we have a motion... And so we have a motion today because the specific plan, anybody that has the stamina to be around for 10 years for the specific plan, to be on the Expo Line, different committees, all the things that you've done, we need to highlight and give a history so people know that Joyce Perkins was there, she made an impact. And that's just somewhat of a payment for what we're going to get from you in the future. So I just want you to know that we're not letting you off the hook, and this is not a free cup of coffee. And so we just want to let you know, we wanted to honor you again, but we'll have appropriate ceremony. We're going to put the motion in today, but we want, right at the heart of when you come off of King Boulevard in La Mert, when you drive into La Mert Park, we want a appropriate sign that let people know that Joyce Perkins made this parkway happen. When you drive on Degnan and you see the flowers and all that, Joyce Perkins made that happen. And then when you go down, at some point in time, we'll do something on Van Ness, because you're doing our gateways over there, that they know that Joyce Perkins made that impact. So I just wanted to let you know, that's our goal, and glad that Wendy brought you here. But again, the most important thing for us is that you are retiring, which means you have more time, which we can give you more things to do, because we know that you like to volunteer and be a part of a lot of other things. So thank you very much for your impact on the community.
Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Hey, Joyce, now that you're retiring, as Mr. Parks says, you're going to have more free time, a lot more free time. So, you know, once you settle in and settle down and got your new routine set up, I'll check in with you and see if you can set aside maybe an hour a day for us, too. But I just want to say thank you. You know, the Lonnie program is such a great program, and you have been a great leader in helping people rebuild their neighborhoods one block at a time, which is actually the most effective way to do it, because along the way, you build consensus, you really identify needs, you find out what people believe that they want and help them achieve that. And that's what you've done, and you've done a beautiful job throughout the entire city. So I wish you well. I promise I won't call for at least two months, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Joyce, I might call you before she does, because I'm a social worker.
I've already asked her.
And once a social worker, always a social worker.
That's right.
Okay? And the ability you've had to build consensus and make things happen is critical. Our issues today are becoming more intractable, more challenging than ever before. So as Jan Perry said, just take a short break, and then Wendy will fight for you, she'll fight for you, and I'll fight for you, because we need you to continue your public service. Thank you for everything you've done for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Joyce, I remember when you first arrived in the mayor's office, you were part of this movement called Neighborhoods. Now Neighborhoods are all in our vocabulary all the time. You made a difference. I like what Mr. Parks said, it does make a difference when someone comes to a place and said they care, they care about it. Thank you, Joyce Perkins, for all you've done. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Alicon.
Joyce, I can't believe it was 15 years ago that Mayor Reardon initiated the idea of the Lonnie, and you vanguarded that program. It was the precursor to the neighborhood council system, of which I am now chair of the committee that oversees the neighborhood councils. So it gives me particular pleasure to see that that movement of communities engaged in positive activities and with the support of resources were able to do some amazing things. And that movement has now, I believe, been the precursor to the neighborhood council system. I hope that the neighborhood councils will reflect on the work that you've done and model that work in the work that they do forward, and realize how much can be done with just a little bit of resources, because we never gave you all the resources you deserve. But we know that with the resources we did give you, you did amazing things. And I want to particularly mention the Sun Valley Project, even though it's no longer in my district as a result of redistricting. We did some amazing work. The community still appreciates it today, and it was because you enabled them to participate in that program. So thank you so much for your work. I know that you're going to continue to stay close and work with the city of Los Angeles. I wish you continued success, and thank you so much for making LA a brighter place all over.
Thank you. You get the last word?
Well, I just want to say it's truly an honor to be recognized by the city council today. And I first want to thank Councilwoman Wendy Grul for her thoughtfulness in arranging this wonderful occasion. And I also want to thank Danielle Torrica in her office for his hard work in coordinating all of this with my staff, and he kept his good nature throughout the whole process. And I want to thank all of you on the city council for honoring me today and for your support and the partnerships that you've had with Lonnie. It's really been a privilege and an honor to be a part of creating Lonnie and leading this incredible organization for the past 15 years. There is absolutely no way Lonnie could go about its work of improving communities and empowering its stakeholders without having your support as well as your confidence. I also recognize that our work would be impossible without the continued support that we have been so fortunate to receive from the mayor's office and the many city departments that we work with. In fact, we're now working with our third mayoral administration, and we've received tremendous support from all three. And I would be remiss if I failed to recognize the role of my husband, Paul Perkins, who is here with me. The role that he has played overall in all of this, he has really been my anchor, and he's been Lonnie's number one volunteer all of these years, going along with whatever needed to be done, whenever it needed to be done. And he's here today with my oldest son, Paul Jr. And of course, nothing at all would get done at Lonnie without our hard-working staff, who are also, some of them are also here with me today. And I would just like to close by saying that mine is not a departure, but a change of roles. I will no longer be running the Lonnie day-to-day operations. That will be turned over to Veronica Hahn. Raise your hand, Veronica, our capable deputy director. But I will be a member of the board of directors, and along with the other wonderful board members, we have our president here, Karen. Matt. Along with that, my board of directors, I will continue to advocate for Lonnie and support his efforts in any way that I can. Of course, I'm not leaving the city. I am still very committed to what's happening here, and I will continue to volunteer my efforts as I can. And again, I appreciate your support for this honor, and I trust that you will continue, as I will, to support Lonnie in the future. And I thank you very much.
Are you going to go in the back and take a picture? Is that okay?
Thank you. Our next presentation will be from Council District 4, Councilmember Labange.
Good morning again, members. Today, we honor a great American who's no visitor anywhere. We honor Colonel Gail Halverson, United States Air Force. Gail Halverson was a member of the United States Air Force, was involved with the Berlin airlift, was very special and key in America diplomacy. After the horrors of Germany and the defeat of Germany, Germany was divided after the war between the Russian sector, the French, the British, and the American sector. But they could not come to grips on the capital city, which was in the Russian sector, and they then divided the capital of Berlin. It was a free city, Berlin. Over the course of time, when diplomatic issues arose, there was a Soviet blockade of Berlin, and they closed off the roadways, the railways, to come to Berlin. A quick-thinking administration at the time put together an airlift, which brought in tons and tons of coal, flour, wheat, and other supplies to keep the 2 million people of Berlin alive. And it was a very important role, which was made here, to keep the city alive, to keep it alive, ultimately, as things transformed many, many years later. As we all know, in 1989, when the wall did fall down, it was efforts that would take many, many years before. And this young guy right here was only 27 years old, flying a big, big airplane into Berlin, and they called him Captain Wiggle Wings, because he wiggled his wings as all the children of Berlin would climb atop the rubble of the town and get parachuted chocolate. Gail Halverson is an outstanding American, and we're honored here to have him here. And we're here with this commendation signed by the mayor. I presented it to him last night at a special event, but I didn't present it to him where he could see it. I just wrote about it, talked about it. But he played such a crucial role in here and all the history as a flight commander. He has touched the lives of many, many people. He is an ambassador to the United States. He's been honored several times in Berlin. So Gail Halverson, I present this on behalf of my colleagues and the mayor of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Gail. You're great. You're great. I'd like to ask Mr. Rosendahl, a veteran and a great member of the council, to say a few words.
Just a few words, and I keep my veteran's hat in the drawer there, because when time comes like this to honor someone who's made a huge difference, and you know where the Germans talk about him, even today, he was just there last year, and they come to him. Why? Because during that conflict, during that war, he dropped little handkerchiefs with candies in it for kids. He was a positive influence in saving lives of people in a war situation. On behalf of Post 283, which is from that Great War of World War II, we all salute you for what you've done for all of us.
And also representing the Federal Republic of Germany, Dr. Christian Starks, Council General, Los Angeles.
Counsel, it is indeed an honor for me to be here with Gail Halverson. Colonel Gail Halverson is an icon in Germany. And this year that we remember, the 17th anniversary of the Berlin airlift, he's been feeded all over. He's traveled from one place to another. And of course, Berlin is always his kind of home base, because it was Berlin where he made this gesture, which was unbelievable for someone who just a few years ago had, not he himself, but his fellow pilots dropped bombs to fight Nazi Germany, and to come back three years later, only three years later after the end of the Second World War, to help an entire city of more than 2 million survive. And he combined it with this enormous gesture of winning over the hearts of the children and thereby winning over the hearts of the future of Germany. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is a great history. We're distributing some material there, which is so important to see. And this is the 60th anniversary. I had the pleasure, on the 50th anniversary, to represent this city and had the honor to speak in the Olympic Stadium, along with the mayor of Berlin, the only two speakers. I presented a commendation on behalf of all of us then. It was very touching then. The people of Berlin invite these pilots and others back at their cost as a guest of Berlin every year, and we cannot forget that special generosity of our sister city of Berlin. Mr. President?
Just one last note, Colonel. Great Angelino and dear friend of mine, Andre Cherny, just wrote The Candy Bombers, which is a great tale. If folks don't know that story, which I know you were very involved in the interviews with, we had a book party out for him here, and I have it on my desk. I'm taking it with me this weekend to actually begin reading, but it is, from all accounts, an extraordinary way to hear about when America was at its very best, and I think our best days are still ahead. So thank you for inspiring us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now let's welcome the great Colonel Gail Halverson.
It's a real honor to be here with the city council, a special occasion for me. Stand by, Tom. He gave a rousing talk in Olympic Stadium in Berlin. I tell you, the whole crowd was loaded with people, got the message that he represented their sister city here at the City of Angels. So I'm grateful to be here and an honor to accept this special award from the city council and signed by the mayor, not for myself solely, but on behalf of the thousands of British, French, and Americans that gave hope, hope to the people of Berlin, for someday they might be free. A 10-year-old boy said it best to me, the symbol of hope, and we need it today, don't we? But that hope is so important. He said, "I was a boy of 10, going to school. The clouds were very low, and the rain was coming down. I couldn't see the airplanes, but we know they were landing by radar. And suddenly out of the clouds came a parachute with a fresh Hershey candy bar, landed right at my feet. I was astounded. I knew what was happening, didn't think it happened to me. But he said, 'It took me a week to eat that candy bar. I hit it day and night.' And then he looked far off for a moment and said, 'It's not the chocolate that was important. What was important was that somebody in America knew I cared, and somebody sent this over to me. I have a connection outside of this blockade to somebody that encouraged me, gives me hope that someday I'll be free.' And then he said something very significant. He said, 'I can live on thin rations, and maybe we're going to have to do that around here. I can live on thin rations, but not without hope.' And then he put an exclamation mark to that by saying, 'Without hope, the soul dies.' You see dead sea souls in our community here in Los Angeles, who have no connection outside of their blockaded problems that surround themselves, without you, the people who are younger today, the Perkinses, and those who've gone out of their way to give that symbol of hope, that somebody outside of themselves care about what's going to happen to them. Go bless your efforts, and those around the world who are trying to help the oppressed to enjoy what we take for granted, the great freedom we enjoy today. Thank you."
Secretary of State.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, if the great senator from New York doesn't take the job, I think Gail should be the Secretary of State.
All right. Thank you very much. Certainly is a great ambassador. Our next presentation is by Councilwoman Jan Perry from CD9.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm inviting the members of the Coalition for Responsible Community Development to join me here at the podium. Come on up, everybody. Come closer. Come on, close. Come on. Come on, come, 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 close, come, close, come. So you can be on TV. Today, I am joined by the Coalition for Responsible Community Development, or CRCD, a youth-centered nonprofit community development corporation located right in the 9th Council District. Their mission is to better sustain, coordinate, and improve local planning, development, and community services that address the needs of low-income and working-class residents and small businesses of Los Angeles. And I am very proud to announce that CRCD recently received federal funding from the Department of Justice's Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention to help offer young people essential job training programs. Their workforce development program, MUR, provides local youth and young adults between the ages of 17 and 25 years old in South Los Angeles the opportunity to secure living-wage jobs with a career path. The MUR program provides reliable on-the-job training, employment readiness workshops, linkages to Los Angeles Trade Technical College, and placement in union apprenticeships. Each year, 50% of the program participants will complete the education requirements for a union apprenticeship in the construction trades and will be accepted into union apprenticeships and will increase their income by 30%. That's pretty good. That's something to applaud. Most people can't make that claim these days. By providing job skills and access to employment, CRCD offers brighter futures to our young people and strengthens their communities with economic development. And as Councilwoman of the 9th District, I am in full support and admiration of the goals of MUR program, or MUR, and CRCD organization, and I am very pleased that they sought and received federal funding. And here with me today, just to say a few words, is the Executive Director of the Coalition for Responsible Community Development, Mr. Mark Wilson, who would like to share a few words and just recognize and introduce some of the folks who are here today. Through their efforts, they have truly served people in need in South Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to welcome Mark to the podium, and he's also here with Brian Wilson, board member, and Noemi Soto, and the multitudes of young people behind us.
Thank you to the council, to the council president. And on behalf of the Coalition for Responsible Community Development, I really want to thank you, Councilwoman, for all your support. We could not have done and delivered the type of services that we do on a daily basis to young people in need. to young people in need of our type of services without your help and support. So I just want to give you a round of applause because without you, it wouldn't be possible. I just want to say that in an area with several challenges, there are so many opportunities. And behind me is one of those many opportunities, an area where there is a high concentration of gang activities and other activities that lure young people to participate in destructive activities. Our young people have decided to participate in a program to change their lives. That's really close to my heart and to the heart of many people in the neighborhood, and I appreciate all of the work that they've done to change their lives, and we look forward to continuing to work with them. With that said, I want to bring up Noemi Soto, our Workforce Development Program Manager.
I want to thank everybody for this recognition and, of course, Jan Perry for this support and continued support to a particular population that many people have given up working with. It is with great pleasure that we, as an organization, can be a platform for young people to transform their lives, to be change agents in the community, be self-sufficient and a dependable workforce for our community and our city. We feel that this is a great investment, and we would need more resources for second chances as opposed to punitive approaches. So thank you all for your support.
I want to introduce one more person who's actually in charge of our Neighborhood and Community Beautification Program. This is a program that provides graffiti removal in our area, a program that does bulky item pickup services and business corridor maintenance on the historic Central Avenue corridor. I would like to... This program is also the vehicle that CRCD uses to provide young people with that first-time work experience where they learn how to use equipment and tools and other machines that will be transferable for other jobs. So I would like to bring up Montez Fowler to say just a few words.
Say something. Say something.
Hello, everybody. We are glad to receive the award, and like Mark Wilson said, we have a lot of challenges, but we're willing to face them head-on, and we're people of the community that's for the community. And we love to, you know, help out the youngsters on the streets, and we change their lives, put a lot of effort into it. And, you know, with the help of Jan Perry, you know, we're allowed to do a nice and diligent job. So I'd like to thank the staff too that's behind me because we have a lot of teamwork that we have, and we love our job, and we just appreciate all the support that we can get. Thank you very much.
You'll never find a nicer group of young people who are mutually supportive of each other and role models to the community. We had a holiday lighting the other night on Central Avenue. Many of them were there, not only helping us put the event together and making sure everything was clean and picked up afterwards, but watching out for the kids from the neighborhood too that didn't go without notice. I really appreciate that. They're just a wonderful, loving, good group of people, and I intend to keep supporting them for as long as I can. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Perry, before you all leave, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Jan Perry for bringing you forward, but more importantly, I just want you to know that there are thousands of people listening to you. I know in this room sometimes it's hard to see or even understand that we're listening, but we really are. There's a lot of council members that are here, but we're all doing two or three things at one time. But I just want to let you know that the fact that you are here and the fact that you're sharing this is going to ripple throughout the community. And it's gonna hopefully inspire more young folks to understand that they have an opportunity for change. In Spanish, there's this phrase, "Corriendo el voz," meaning "it'll be by word of mouth." And it is the trust and it is the level of sincerity and devotion that you've committed to achieve these goals. And if they see that you can do it, "Corriendo el voz," the ripple effect will occur and hopefully will continue stimulating change. I want to thank a council member for doing that, Councilman Perry, and for all of you who have made that effort and to stand strong, because I know how hard the pressures are not to be where you're at. And so stay there, stay strong, and hopefully, just hopefully, maybe one of you guys might be in these chairs. Take care.
Thank you.
Members, as you know, every month I recognize an organization that is promoting child safety, and this month I'm very pleased to recognize the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, Los Angeles Chapter. This is an interesting subject for me, not only because I share a general concern with everybody about the issues of diabetes, but I'm also aware, as the former Assemblyman of the 39th District, that that district had the highest level of obesity in the entire state of California. And so it is my pleasure to recognize this organization for the tremendous impact they have on reducing the scourge of diabetes in our community. They have had an unwavering commitment to the children in our communities, particularly who have type 1 diabetes. They're committed to finding a cure, but also to increasing education awareness and providing support to the children and their families. Type 1 diabetes can occur at any age, but most commonly is diagnosed from infancy to the late 30s. My district is one of the hardest-hit districts for obesity and juvenile diabetes in the state, and it's imperative that we continue to work hard to ensure that people know about the disease and take measures to prevent it. The international organization, Juvenile Diabetes Relief Fund, is the number-one nonprofit, non-governmental funder of type 1 diabetes research worldwide. The mission is constant, to find a cure for type 1 diabetes and its complications through the support of research. Since its founding in 1970 by parents of children with juvenile diabetes, JDRF has awarded more than $1.3 billion to type 1 diabetes research, including $156 million just this Every year, the Greater Los Angeles Chapter contributes over $4 million annually to diabetes research, and each year they strive to increase that figure and move closer to a cure. In addition to raising money for research, the professional staff board and volunteers also provide support and education to the community about diabetes and its complications. JDRF's family network, the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, LA Family Network, is intended to provide our families with a safe, close-knit community that provides opportunities for ongoing support, networking, and sharing. It provides a Bag of Hope. The Bag of Hope program is a JDRF chapter-based effort to reach children with diabetes and their families at the time of diagnosis with a comprehensive collection of educational and comforting material. At the time that a family requests a Bag of Hope, there's also the option to request to meet another family living with type 1 diabetes. This veteran family offers reassurance and a chance for the newly diagnosed family to ask questions of those with more experience. I don't need to tell you that they are having tremendous impact in the research of type 1 diabetes. But more importantly, as city council members, we appreciate their service directly to our constituents. As the council member of Council District 7, where we have one of the highest rates of obesity in the entire state of California and therefore a high rate of diabetes, but not to mention that Los Angeles, with its high African-American and Latino populations, struggles with this issue on an ongoing basis. So we owe a debt of gratitude to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, and I call upon their Executive Director, Robert Reed, to accept this certificate and say a few words for all of us.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Alacon and the City Council of Los Angeles. I'm really pleased to be here today. November is actually National Diabetes Awareness Month, and this is helping us to raise awareness of diabetes in the public and also in the media. It's very important to recognize the incidence of type 1 diabetes as opposed to also type 2 diabetes. Type 1 strikes without any prejudice towards age, race, weight, economic factor, or council district. And 7.5% of the population of Los Angeles is actually our diabetic people who are living with the disease that in more likelihood will have a shortening effect on their life. As the council member mentioned, we have one purpose and one purpose alone, and that's to find a cure. And towards that end, we have raised here in Los Angeles over $35 million in the last 20 years. All of that has gone directly to research. This year, in 2008, we funded $156 million in research programs, 1,000 programs on research protocols, 39 clinical trials, a number of important projects actually right here in the city of Los Angeles. So on behalf of the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, I thank you for recognizing and helping to make the community more aware of type 1 diabetes, which is different than type 2 diabetes and is often difficult to diagnose, and new patients with type 1 are 90% of those are children under the age of 10. So it has a tremendous impact on families. We're also doing in Los Angeles something that is not being done elsewhere, and we hope it will be an innovation, and that is expanding the family network so that people have support that they require to cope with the disease. So thank you very much for your honors.
Thank you. And before you go, Mr. Reyes.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and thank Councilor Alacon for bringing you forward and all your hard work. The Junior Diabetes Association is so critical. My 15-year-old son was struck with type 1 diabetes a year ago, and so I know what that means to a family, to a child, and to come forward with some type of solution, a remedy, a procedure that can bring them back to that level of normalcy is so critical. So I thank you for this, and not, again, not many people understand it. The Latino community is very, very prevalent. The studies show its traumatic impact, and just understanding that sometimes it's not anyone's fault, it happens. And so how we respond to it is critical. So thank you so much for never giving up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Appreciate it. That'll be the last presentation. Madam Clerk, if you could call through the roll, please. Oh, we did the roll already, so first items.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Next are commensary resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
No, we'll go through the items first, please.
Items 1 through 5 are items noted for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to continue hearing and present the ordinances on December 12. Madam President, there is a card on item number 1.
Okay, we will call that one special. Everything else will be continued to the 12th. Next items.
Item number 6 is an item for which public hearing has been held. The Public Works Report has been submitted for that item.
Anyone wish to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 6, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next items.
Items 7 through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and Madam President, there are cards on 7, 13, and 14.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone wish to call the remaining items special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the additional items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, for information, the ordinances will be carried over to December 2nd.
Thank you.
Next is the special meeting.
Call the roll on the special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Yes. First order of business, please.
Item number 15 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, anyone wish to call item 15 special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
We could have that to go forth with, please.
Items number 16 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and Madam President, there are cards on 16, 17, and 18.
Those will be called special for those cards. The remaining item would be item number 19. If anyone wishes to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, should council recess the special meeting and continue the items to the regular meeting before starting the second special meeting?
Yes, please. That'll be the order.
Second special meeting, Alacon, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Item number 20 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration, and Madam President, there is a card on this item.
We will hold that item as a special with the card. We want to recess that and take it to our general meeting. Next item.
That brings council back to items called special.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, I know we wish to take item number 17.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm very pleased and honored as a representative of the Los Angeles City Council to be of Lebanese heritage, and the history of Lebanon is as old as the earliest evidence of humankind. Its geography positions Lebanon to provide a crossroads linking the Mediterranean basin to Asia, which secures its place as a trading center and cosmopolitan and multicultural nation. And I've had the opportunity, along with our council president, to visit Beirut, Lebanon, and there's a sister city between the city of Los Angeles and Beirut, Lebanon. As the home of a city that claims to be the longest continuous inhabited city in the world, Lebanon's been part of many empires: the Phoenicians, Assyrian, Babylonian, Armenian, Persian, Greek, Roman, Arab, Ottoman, and French. Yet 65 years ago, the heart of the Lebanese people was acknowledged as an independent Lebanon was declared in November 1943. Today, we welcome Lebanese Council General, Hossam Diab, and members of the Los Angeles Beirut Sister City Committee to celebrate this wonderful occasion. Madam President, I have two presentations that we will be making following the comments, and I'd just like to show them briefly. And our graphics folks even put the Lebanese flag, a certificate of recognition hereby presented to, 65th anniversary of the Independence Day of Lebanon with the Lebanese flag. And the second, one's gonna go to the sister city, one's going to the Council General of Lebanon with the Cedar of Lebanon tree. So we will be making this acknowledgement. And I know there's some speaker cards, and we have a podium. Madam Chair, if you can call those forward for some brief comments. I know that the Lebanese people are very patient since you got here at 10 o'clock and it's almost 12 o'clock, but we are patient people, but it's taken 65 years to come to this point. And my colleague, Eric, our state our council president, he and I had the honor and the privilege two years ago to visit on the sister city with Los Angeles and Beirut, Lebanon. We have many sister cities. We haven't visited them all, but it was a real honor being of Lebanese parents, Lebanese grandparents, Lebanese history to have that connection between our city and the beautiful city of Beirut. And this year, I went to Israel, and hopefully with the communications established, we will establish peace in the Middle East with Lebanon, Israel, and that entire Middle Eastern environment. So, Madam President, maybe my colleague wants to say a few words first.
Yes, well, ask Mr. Garcetti, and then we will go. We do have three public comment cards. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zine, and there's very little to add to your eloquence, but I wanted to thank all of our friends from the Lebanese and Lebanese-American community that have waited here very patiently. This is part of our official actions today, so we put it on the agenda, not just as a presentation, but as an official thing that we will send to the mayor for his signature as well. It seems a little bit wrong to be celebrating a 65th anniversary of a country that is so old. We truly are a country that's just a couple hundred years old here in America, but when you go to Lebanon, I've told the story of being in Byblos, which is the oldest continually inhabited town maybe in the world, where you see layer upon layer of culture and society and politics and everything else, from Phoenician times through Greek and Roman and Ottoman and all the way to modern times, really layered on top of each other in such a compact space. And what it speaks to is the great spirit of the people who have been in Lebanon long before Lebanon as a modern nation got its independence, the people of the region, and the Phoenicians and their descendants and their ancestors as well from before even, were folks that decided that this would be a center of culture for all humanity, and that's what Lebanon has been. It has been a crossroads of the world, literally, geographically, but it has been where so many traditions and so many words and so many things that we take for granted today were first born. We can drink wine from vineyards which the grapevines are centuries old. We can go... We can go and see the ruins of all the great history of humanity in one place. You can see the cultures and the mixed religions of the world come together and increasingly live in peace. And that's always a difficult experiment, but it's a beautiful one, and it's one that we should celebrate. And as we uplift Lebanon, what we say to ourselves is we uplift that spirit that no matter who you are, no matter what god you worship, it is really one god, all of us, together, and that we celebrate the greatness of a nation and a people. The state of Lebanon is one celebration, but the state is just where you draw the boundaries. The nation is the people and the family, and that's truly what we celebrate here today. So, thank you to the Council General, who's done an extraordinary job here already in a short time. I know there'll be a great celebration this weekend as well, that I'm sorry that I will not be able to attend, but I will be there very much in spirit. And thank you to our Chief Lebanese Representative on the Council, Mr. Zane, for doing such an extraordinary job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm just going to make a quick comment. First, I want to thank you, Dennis, for being an ambassador always for Lebanon, always making sure everybody understands that there are many sides to the issues in the Mideast. That's been courageous. And on top of that, you've been one of the strongest supporters of Israel that this city has. And so your ability to bridge the situation has been phenomenal, and I really appreciate your leadership in the three years I've seen on that. And to the Lebanese community, I've been to Lebanon. I'll never forget it. It was a time of peace. It was 1974. It was before all of the other stuff happened for a long period of time. And to see how people found Lebanon as a place of peace, and then we went through the turmoil that went on for many, many years, and then to see Lebanon come back, and the most extraordinary thing is when our city leaders went there and a short moment after that, again, there was a very tough international situation. So as we get into this holiday season, we need to have peace in the Mideast. I am excited about our new president. I think the hope and change that he gives to the whole earth about being someone who brings together that future will be a positive opportunity for peace in the Mideast. God bless Lebanon, Lebanese people. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could ask our Council General to please come to the podium as well, Hassan Diab. He will be followed by Ferris Weeby and then by Matt Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really deeply honored to be among you here today in the City Council of Los Angeles celebrating the Independence, 65th Independence Day of Lebanon. On my personal behalf and on behalf of the government of Lebanon, and of course, on behalf of the Lebanese-American community in Los Angeles, who is present with me here today, I wish to express my deepest gratitude and honor for being presented with this symbolic resolution adopted by the Los Angeles City Council, congratulating Lebanon on its Independence Day and evoking the history of the Independence Day of Lebanon, which was obtained on November 22nd, 1943. I have to say that celebrating the Independence Day of Lebanon here in the Los Angeles City Council has a special meaning, as it symbolizes the deep and cherished values of democracy shared by the Lebanese and the American people, whose historical struggle for the independence of their country has taught them the true value of freedom and sovereignty associated with their independence. On this special occasion, I wish to express my sincerest thanks to Los Angeles City Council, and in particular to Councilman Dennis Zane, who is one of our own. I see you raised a flag on your desk, and for leading the effort in creating the Los Angeles Beirut Sister Cities. And I would like to thank Council President Eric Garcetti for being a dear friend of the Lebanese-American community, and also thanks to Mr. Rosenthal and to Councilman Tom Lavange for championing the sister city project in the City of Angels. I wish also to commend Mr. Ferris Weeby, who's standing here beside me, who is the president of the Los Angeles Beirut Sister City Committee, and to all the board members on their great efforts really and dedication and their work for this foundation. I also seize this opportunity to say one last word that the Council General of Lebanon and Los Angeles and all members of the Lebanese-American community, living in this vibrant city of Los Angeles, that they all really thank your efforts in strengthening the bonds and friendship and brotherhood between the communities, which makes the Los Angeles city a real melting pot of mutually cherishing and enriching communities. I thank you very much, Madam Chair. I thank all the City Council for this resolution. God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Ferris?
Thank you very much, friends, council members. This certificate here, I want to thank you on behalf of the Lebanese-American community for this certificate, but also an acknowledgement on your part of the contribution that the Lebanese-Americans have contributed to the fabric of this city and in many ways to the state and to the world. Lebanon, over thousands of years, every year, thousands of brains go outside Lebanon and they go to other countries. And wherever they go, the beauty of the Lebanese people is they become part of the society that they live in. They contribute to that society, and I want to thank you for acknowledging it today by presenting us with this resolution. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. We do have one other public comment card. Mr. Matt Dowd?
Yeah, they're going to take a better picture of us in the back. Yeah, thank you so much, Matt Dowd, Channel 35. I had to come in on this one. I'd like to have a couple of comments while they disappear out of the room. See, I'm happy, I'm thrilled for the independence of Lebanon, but see, the council gets up, I just want to point out some of the hypocrisy. See, the council president, Eric Garcetti, will get up and he'll say, "Oh, it doesn't matter what religion, we're all in it together," et cetera, et cetera. Well, here's some ideology that I had out at Venice Beach in 2005. Look how tatted that is, right?
Need to direct it to this particular item, please.
Yeah, and one of them talks about Islamic symbols and the political struggle that this country's gone through. So I identify with them, and they should identify with me. But the city of Los Angeles is discriminating against me, and I have information, it talks about Mecca, how there was a god named Hubal who was lord of the Kaaba, and this Hubal was a moon god. And it's on top of every minaret at the Kaaba and on top of every Islamic mosque throughout the world. So, my, the point being is that we're celebrating the independence of a country who has spent a lifetime, of lifetimes, fighting for political equality and independence, and yet the city of Los Angeles is on one hand saying how wonderful that is, but right in their own backyard, they're discriminating against the very same ideology.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you open the roll on this item? Close the roll and tabulate the votes?
10 ayes.
Thank you. We'll now go to public comment. We could, Russell Randolph, followed by Lucy Caruso, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Hi, my name is Russell Randolph. I've worked in Los Angeles in television production for approximately 15 years or so. About a year ago, I received a letter from the Tax Discovery Program saying that I owed a business tax. Most of the positions I've had over the years in my career in television have been staff positions. Occasionally, I have done a freelance or independent contractor type of thing, and it's my understanding that this tax was based upon that freelance income. I paid the tax. This was about a year ago, so in December, I went down to the Van Nuys office and paid all the taxes that they deemed necessary. And then I sent a letter to the Office of Finance and to Wendy Grul's office about the issue, basically disputing the tax. And I've spent approximately the last year trying to respectfully and properly appeal the tax, all to no avail. The Office of Finance has simply given me a runaround for an entire year. John Dearking is the individual that was assigned to my case, was disseminating misinformation. He told me I could appeal it when it was rejected, and then two months later, all of a sudden recanted that and claimed that he never said that. Though Daniel Torrica of Ms. Grul's office recalls, he was in the loop the entire time, he was very helpful. He recalled Mr. Torrica telling me that I could appeal it, and suddenly Mr. Dearking of the Office of Finance recants. I have contacted the mayor's office on this issue, and to no avail. I've sent them three letters, and they're basically ignoring me. And basically, my stance is, how can I pay a tax that I have never even heard of? Apparently, my research determined that this has been on the books now for years, but suddenly in 2004, they decided to start enforcing Code Section 2103, which recognizes a person who's a freelance employee as a business. I don't have a storefront, business cards, nothing. I'm just an employee. I work for a living. And I'm told that that tax is deemed upon me, and I dispute that, if how am I supposed to know this tax even existed? Ms. Grul basically admitted to me that, yes, we recognize the system is flawed, that when they decided to start enforcing this...
We're going to have to ask you to conclude, because we have to stick to the two minutes.
Okay, well, you told me that when you decided to start enforcing this, that basically they'd made no actions to get the information out to the citizens.
Thank you. We have had conversations about this in the existing law and indicated that that is the existing law. We're looking at changes in the future, but it does not impact the past. So, I appreciate you being here, Mr. Randolph. Yeah. I apologize, Mr. Randolph, we have to stick to the two minutes for public comment.
Excuse me, this isn't a conversation, it's just public comment.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Randolph, I'm more so happy to, Mr. Torrica, to talk to you again. We have had the opportunity to have that conversation. You and I have had a discussion on the phone as well. So, Mr. Torrica, Daniel from my office. Our next speaker is Lucy Caruso, followed by Arnold Sacks. Ms. Caruso? Mr. Sacks, followed by Oscar Johnson, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Thank you very much. A couple of recaps from recent newspaper articles. This one, from the 11th of November, details the mayor's funding for his campaign in these states. He has $2.3 million he's raised for his campaign, which is a little bit more than the amount, $2 million that was going to be paid for the advertising at the convention center. The mayor's clerk says, in a city like LA, $2.3 million doesn't go that far. But for the whole city, $2 million is a generous bonus because it's money the city never got. I'd also like to point out that the council, in its grandeur, designated $2.5 million to clear up a backlog of 7,000 rapes. This article from October 29th said there's a backlog of 1,000 rapes approximately per year. Just out of curiosity, how many rapes cases have been processed by this city police department over the timeframe that 1,000 have been backlogged? That would be interesting to find out. We also have an article regarding the fingerprinting and how bizarre that situation is. We've heard from the city auditor that the first garbage fee increase that generated $137 million, only a portion of that went to hire new police officers, but the rest went for salaries. We've had stories that it costs between $1 million and $1,000,000.6 to investigate a murder in LA. We don't have any kind of concrete numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Mr. Oscar Johnson, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry and Mr. Dowd. Mr. Johnson? He's left? Okay. Yes, Ms. Autry?
Mr. Johnson, he's a colleague of mine. I'd like to speak on his behalf, if possible.
We cannot give you his time, but you can speak on your time.
Fine, both of our time.
I'm sorry?
Could you combine the time?
We're not allowed to do that, ma'am.
Okay, again, yes, my name is Yvonne Michelle Autry, and I'd like to address the city council relative to interview, a discussion that we had Tuesday at the Police Commissioners' Meeting. It was implemented by LACAN, Los Angeles Community Action Network, in direct opposition, open opposition to the Safer Cities Initiative, as it has been presently implemented. We are not against the improvement of the downtown area, however, not at the expense of poor people, homeless people, who are the most vulnerable and the most antigen. We oppose the civil rights, and I wanted to expose the violations of the civil and human rights which have been perpetrated under the auspices of the Safer Cities Initiative, which has been supported, condoned, and authorized by Mayor Villarogosa and Chief Bratton. This is colonization as it stands. This is an occupation of the downtown area. I can say this clearly because I've lived here for six years, and it is an extermination of the poor people, primarily black and people of color. They are being trampled and stepped on by the horses. I appreciate your attention, please. They are being intimidated. One black woman was beaten to death, and she was unarmed. I'm a black woman, and I take that very seriously, because my parents fought for civil rights in this country, and it will not be reversed, not on my watch, and not on those who are concerned about the civil rights which all in this country enjoy, not just the privileged, not just the wealthy who are regenterifying this area, which I know leads to a greater, you know, positive revenue and cash flow for the city, but we still have civil rights which are being violated under the Safer Cities Initiative, which, I mean, in its present form. Also, Tuesday, we spoke about the need for services and housing. The LAPD is not the correct agency to deal with the homeless.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Matt Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. This one's primarily for the benefit of Mr. Alakon, since he wasn't here when all this Venice thing went down. But look, here's some of my ideology that appears on my coffin boxes, which go with the incense. Now, this particular one has elephants. Elephants. 2005, I've been talking about elephants. I sell these little incense holder elephants. They come from India. See, in India, the elephant is a sacred creature. Besides power and prosperity, the elephant also symbolizes clouds and gracefulness. See, this is a massive god in India, but we're celebrating Greg Smith makes it to 60, right? He'll be here tonight, he'll be at home, whatever, celebrating or wherever he is. He made it to 60, but he's the one who fought to have elephants in the LA Zoo. Name an elephant that made it to 60 in the LA Zoo. Never. In fact, the one recently, Greta, suicided. That elephant sat down and said, "Enough, but we don't need to send elephants to the valley." That's like the most ridiculous thing. Look, protocol's over, you found that out too. So you need to take over on Bill Rosenthal's district, because you're a city attorney in federal court telling the judge, "This is not the First Amendment." Figure that out. But yeah, having an elephant in Los Angeles, this is a concrete jungle, parking meters. Having an elephant here is like having a parking officer in the jungle. Let's send one of these white parking officers out to the jungle, drive around in Africa looking for a parking violation. That's how silly it is. Now, elephants don't like to be alone, either. So don't create something, we're just going to waste more city money and maintenance and the whole. I can see it now.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment. Madam Clerk, we're going to go to item number 16, acknowledge my colleague and President Erica Garcetti. We do have a number of cards, Mr. Garcetti, so how would you like to do that first?
The cards first, please.
At one minute, two minutes?
Sure.
Two minutes?
We waive this, though, I think we have to do two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. These are the following individuals I'd like to, has to come forward. Joel Montano, Veronica Perez Becker, Lavelle Stewart, and Estella Astadiot. And then we'll call the next four after that. Mr. Montano?
Hello. My name is Joel Montano. I'm a tenant organizer with the Coalition for Economic Survival. We sincerely support this important motion to protect tenants who unfortunately find themselves living in rental buildings which have been foreclosed. Because their units are not under rent control, they are totally defenseless against unjust evictions from banks and financial institutions. These tenants have been paying their rent on time, many living in their apartments for many years. They have not committed any act that justifies being evicted. Their only misfortune is they happen to live in a building where their landlord has not been able to pay the mortgage. For this, they should not be punished. In these hard economic times, this motion brings some bit of relief and justice. We commend Councilmember Garcetti for bringing this motion forth and urge the council to fully support it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Veronica Perez Becker with the Central City Association. We're not here to oppose this item. We're here to ask that it be sent to committee. While we appreciate the effort to assist those affected by our economic and foreclosure crisis, we are concerned that the item before you, while well-intentioned, is premature. This item seeks to extend provisions of the rent stabilization ordinance to non-RSO properties, including single-family homes. Specifically, it seeks to limit evictions of tenants in non-RSO foreclosed properties. This item could have far-reaching impacts, yet this was waived out of committee. None of the major stakeholders, including the financial institutions, have been consulted. We understand that the motion instructs the city attorney to draft an ordinance, and that we will have an opportunity to comment on the draft ordinance. However, we are concerned that after the ordinance is drafted, we will only be able to make changes around the edges. This first needs to be sent to committee so we can have the discussion about whether we should move forward with this policy. The California Bankers Association has submitted a letter to you asking for time to comment, and they raised several questions. Will this ordinance make it more difficult to market foreclosed properties for resale and exacerbate the downturn? Will it hurt the HUD Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which provides funding to local agencies to purchase and resell foreclosed properties? We need to have a dialogue about these issues before you instruct the city attorney to draft the ordinance, and we respectfully request that you send this to committee before a vote. Thank you. Thank you. Lavelle Stewart, Estella Astudillo, and followed by Kip Cyprus, and then Matt Dowd.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lavelle Stewart. I work on housing issues in the Acorn office here in Los Angeles. Over the past year, we've had hundreds of people coming to our office for help because of foreclosures. While many of these people are homeowners, we have also seen a lot of tenants, especially from South Los Angeles. A lot of tenants are being pushed out by banks on a very quick timeline. I have seen how devastating this is to people's lives, people of age, people who have small children, and people who have rented the same home for many years. And often, we have seen the banks let the property sit vacant for months or longer without even selling it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Estella?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Estela Astudillo.
Good afternoon. My name is Estella Astudillo.
Yo soy miembro de ECHO por seis años.
I'm a member of Acorn for six years.
Yo he rentado la misma casa por once años.
I've rented the same house for 11 years.
Allí vivo con mis hijos y mis nietos.
I live there with my kids and my grandkids.
Este año me enteré que el dueño de la propiedad la perdió en un embargo.
This year, I found out that the owner of the property lost it to foreclosure.
Después el banco me dijo que me tenía que ir.
After that, the bank told me I had to get out, too.
Como yo soy miembro de ECHO, vine a conseguir ayuda legal.
Because I'm a member of Acorn, I came by to get legal help.
Me enteré que no me tenía que ir porque vivo en un edificio que está bajo control de renta.
I found out that I didn't have to leave because the building that I live in is covered by rent control.
Si no fuera por ECHO, yo ya habría perdido mi hogar.
If it weren't for ECHO, I would have lost my home.
Ahora pago mi renta a los hermanos Lehman porque no han vendido la casa.
Now I pay my rent to Lehman Brothers because they haven't sold the house yet.
Yo creo que hay muchas personas en esta situación en Los Ángeles.
I think there are a lot of people in this situation in LA.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. Kip Cyprus, or Kip, followed by Matt Dowd, followed by Adam Murray, and Lea Simon Weisberg.
Good morning. I want to thank the city council for allowing me to address you this morning. The initiative you're considering to expand rent control to single-family housing that's foreclosed on will have a large impact on property values, and city values, for that matter. If a lender is looking to loan on a house, he goes by current sale, by current sales prices to place value for the loan. That value would change dramatically, however, if the owner chooses to rent the property and let it go to foreclosure, which the lender is then faced with, with an asset which is unmarketable, and will force the lender to go into property management business. Just to give you an example, a normal house in Los Angeles in the inner city is worth approximately $300,000. Many home loans are in excess of that value at this time. If a house is rented for $1,200 a month for a three-bedroom, which is not uncommon, you can take 40% of that for expenses, and, which would leave 60% for debt service, which is approximately $720 a month. That would service a loan of $120,000. Just think what $120,000 value, house values, would do to the city revenue, not to mention the housing crisis and the banking crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to let me address you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd?
Yeah, thank you. This would be a good one if you could trust the city attorneys to actually come up with an ordinance that's going to be sound and is actually going to do what it's intended. But I actually think, we talked about this a lot, and I'll thank you not to count this two minutes in my regular five, because this is a special meeting. Yeah, we talked about this whole financial crisis, housing market meltdown, Zuma Dog was all over it two years ago, almost now. See, the stock market's tanked down to 7,500. A lot of people have lost money, including these developers and landlords, and I think you're going to find in the city of Los Angeles that rents are going to come down naturally now, because a lot of people are holding property. They're going to lose if they don't rent it. And I'm out of Venice Beach all the time. All these condos, they came out, that's why they're kicking us off the beach, because they want to have all these condos for sale, but they're sitting there empty. Nobody's got any money to buy them. So the rent's going to come down all by itself because these people will be desperate to put tenants in. But I'm happy to see that the city council is trying to do something, but you've just fallen on your own face with the whole, all this density, everything you've tried to build, and the luxury condos, the whole housing market's a mess, and you've got no one to blame but yourselves.
Yes, Adam Murray, followed by Lea Simon Weisberg, followed by James Litz.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name's Adam Murray. I am the executive director of Inner City Law Center, which is a nonprofit organization on Skid Row here in LA that focuses on housing and homelessness issues. We are seeing quite a number of tenants who are getting kicked out of their homes because their property buildings have been foreclosed upon, and wanted to come today to express my personal support and our organization's support for this proposal. We also wanted to add, though, that we think it's, well, it's an important first step. It's a very small first step. And there are a couple of other things that I would suggest that you should also be seriously considering. We are seeing quite a number of tenants who don't know who to pay their rent to. Because their buildings have been foreclosed upon, sometimes their prior owners are still asking for rent. Sometimes the new banks are coming in and asking for rent. Sometimes, other people who have no association with the owner whatsoever are asking for rent. And so I would encourage you to consider whether or not there might be some process by which the foreclosed institutions could be required to register with the city as the new owner, so that the individual tenants could identify specifically who it is that they should be paying rent to. Secondly, I'd also comment that, while this is a small step forward, the bigger problem here is that the existing law for the units that are covered is not being enforced. It's not being applied. We are seeing a ton of tenants who are covered by rent stabilization ordinance currently, who are still getting kicked out of their homes. And when we get involved in those cases, almost always, 98% of the times, the financial institutions agree to dismiss the case, and the tenants are able to stay in their homes. But we only see a small portion of those cases. And so I would encourage you to also task the city attorney with figuring out how we can more aggressively enforce the existing law and make sure that the units that are covered, and the ones that you are looking to cover, that the law is actually being applied to those. So thank you for your time, and thank you, Councilman Garcetti, and Weeza, for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Lea, followed by James Litz.
Good afternoon, and thank you again for giving us the opportunity to talk about this. I am the co-executive director of Eviction Defense Network. I've been doing this work for about six years now, and in the first five years, four and a half, I had seen four evictions of tenants because of foreclosure. I would say every single day, at least 40% of the people coming into our office are tenants being evicted due to foreclosure. I would say about half of those are rent-controlled units that never should have been served, and the other half are tenants who are non-rent-controlled, who in theory could be served. The other huge concern, and just echo what my prior colleague stated from Inner City Law Center, that the banks are consciously serving tenants in ways to make sure they don't know what's happening. All of the notifications the tenants are receiving are in the name of the landlord, and it'll say the landlord's name and occupants. They then proceed to court using that the tenants were somehow the occupants. Even, you know, state law was changed that instead of a 30-day notice, they're given a 60-day notice, and this is only for people who are not under rent control. They're giving them three 60-day notices, again, in the name of the landlord. The tenants, of course, because they've been receiving foreclosure notices forever, for, you know, probably often, you know, six months to a year, are just passing them back over to the landlord and not thinking that it addresses them. The landlord, the banks are then filing eviction cases after the three days with the assumption that somehow the tenants were supposed to tell them. They are making very little efforts to come and really find out. Even when they find out that there are tenants there, they're still going forward. So I think it's incredibly important to, first off, expand the same protections to everybody in the city, because it is really awful that we've got families who are being kicked out. And the banks are not being generous, and they're not, on their own, taking into consideration the impact they're having on the community. And so, obviously, we think this is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Good afternoon. James Litz, representing the Beverly Hills Greater Los Angeles Association of Realtors. I'm here, we are opposing this proposal to expand the rent stabilization ordinance to cover non-rent stabilized properties and single-family residences. First, it's very disappointing that the lenders who are foreclosing are not keeping these properties occupied. It's just horrible that they're not using this housing that we so desperately need in Los Angeles to keep these units occupied. But second, one of the growth industries in the real estate industry is receiverships, acting as receivers for these properties. There are many real estate professionals on the West Side now who are making a great living acting as receivers for lenders to stabilize the properties, get them all rented, keep the neighborhood stable, keep the neighborhood safe, and prepare these properties for sale. So there is a way out of this. Maybe the city could help to guide lenders to these receivers so that these properties can be utilized and can be rented and can provide the housing that we so desperately need. This proposal to, will create a disincentive for lenders to try to even do anything to these properties, to put them under rent stabilization, because it creates a disincentive to the sales of the properties. And in the long run, this might violate the tenants of a state law passed in 1996 that restricts the additional rent stabilized units, especially on single-family homes, but on anything built after 1978. If this proposal does move forward, we hope it goes back to committee for careful, careful, careful consideration, and great input from the affected people. I mean, the tenants, the property owners, and the lenders who are foreclosing on the unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you to members of the public who very patiently waited this morning to give testimony on this. Colleagues, we know that we're in the midst of a recession that was caused by the mortgage-related financial crisis, but not everyone is aware of some of the ripple effects that have been caused by this crisis and what it's doing to our neighborhoods. Last month, I joined with Mr. Parks, and we stood with Johnny Lee, a resident in Council District 13, who lives in a triplex in Echo Park, that was subject to rent control. The property had recently been foreclosed on by Countrywide Home Loans. And one day, an agent on behalf of Countrywide showed up at his door and offered him that he, $2,000 to move out immediately and give him the keys. Thinking that he didn't have rights, he signed that, and while $2,000 may sound generous, it was actually an illegal action. Johnny had become one of the truly innocent victims of this crisis, and but for the fact that he called our office, he would be out of his apartment right now. The good news is, we got him back in there and saved two other of the tenants that live there. Now, foreclosure of rent-controlled buildings is not a sufficient reason for evictions. Last summer, it was Councilmember Parks and I, in his district, that we came together and brought attention to another tenant who had been given notice of eviction, and within 24 hours, we got that notice torn up by Countrywide. Johnny and those folks were lucky among the other 300 victims that the Housing Department has helped, but thousands of Angelenos are not so lucky. We want to thank also our nonprofit partners that are helping people learn what the law is. They live, other folks live in non-rent stabilized units, and they're being evicted en masse as lenders take control of foreclosed properties. Never mind that, in many cases, this makes no rational business sense, and I'll return to that in a second, because from the business side of stuff, and individual conversations we've had with banks have seemed to reflect this same logic as well. The property becomes vacant. It becomes blighted. It destabilizes community, and then our city attorney is saddled with suing the lender for failure to properly maintain properties, taking city resources away at a time when we have very little. The city attorney has even received a call from a lender seeking assistance in determining which properties they own here in Los Angeles. So as we look at some of the crisis with the banks and the folks that are owning this, many of them, this is happening so rapidly, don't even know what they have, and the mortgages have been chopped up into so many pieces, it's unclear for the owners themselves what they have. And because of that, they aren't finding the right people. And just to Mr. Litz's point, I absolutely agree, and we have actually been proactive, and the Housing Department has begun to contact the large banks and the large lenders to let them know both what the rules are, but also how they can get folks in there to manage those properties. And I agree, it is an unfortunate, but I guess somewhat positive silver lining that that's one area of growth when everything else is going down. There is no disincentive. I want to be very clear what this does. You're right. State law does not allow us to impose control of rents on properties that are post-1978, and this wouldn't do that. The folks that stay in there, folks who own non-rent stabilized apartments, can still raise the rents, and in fact, they're going to get more money than if somebody isn't there. So it makes good business sense for them. What this does is, we have a responsibility for neighborhood stabilization. We have a responsibility to make sure there isn't blight, and we know how hard it is to turn that clock back once we see properties become those blighted properties in our districts. Some of us inherited properties that from the last, kind of not quite as big meltdown, but downturn in the economy, in districts like Ms. Perry's and Mr. Reyes's and myself, sat vacant for decades in some cases. And it takes long, very kind of drawn-out legal cases to be able to do anything there. So I encourage you all to do a couple of things. One, to visit the Housing Department's website and take a look at graphic maps that depict the thousands of foreclosures that have occurred in the city. I know many have done that. Mr. Alarcon has been a great voice on this. Mr. Weeza asked some questions as well this week, really helping us lead the way, and Mr. Reyes and Mr. Wesson, our Chair of Housing Committee, have always been focused on this. But each and every one of those represents a vacant and blighted unit that we are literally rolling the clock back on many decades. This is a crisis that requires immediate action. Our Housing Department has taken the lead on providing substantive research on ways to tackle this problem. We have gone to Washington, DC, and lobbied and changed the legislation, so that we brought home $30 million in the recent legislation to help go after those properties that are foreclosed, put them back into stable communities. But we must immediately explore a stop to these wholesale evictions that we are seeing. This motion only asks the city attorney to draft an ordinance to place a moratorium on foreclosed-related evictions in the city of Los Angeles. It would simply mean that no matter where you lived, if you rented, you could not be evicted simply because the property had been foreclosed on. The usual reasons you can be evicted still exist. If you're not paying your rent. If somebody wants to move into the apartment because they're the owner of it. This certainly doesn't hurt the mom-and-pop owners as well, because these are foreclosed properties that aren't going to mom-and-pop's. They're going to the big banks right now, and we reached out to those banks in talking about some of this, which is why I think the crisis demands that our city attorney begin drafting, give us our options as soon as possible, as we discuss this at length in the HCD Committee. And thank you in particular to Councilmember Wesson, Parks, Alarcon, and Perry, as well as Mr. Reyes, who have been leaders on this issue. I urge and I vote, the time to act is now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks, followed by Ms. Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Race. Oh, sorry, yes.
I wanted to clarify, sorry. The motion and the report on page 17, if we could take the language in that last sentence on the motion that says, "to change the LA Municipal Code or to draft to restrict evictions of tenants in all foreclosed rental properties to be subject to the city's rent stabilization ordinance," to the more clear articulation here, "to restrict evictions of tenants in all foreclosed properties to the grounds provided in the rent stabilization ordinance," I think that would address a good point. Mr. Alarcon brought to my attention, if there's no objection.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to stand, and particularly in representing the 8th District, and draw your attention to item 20 that identifies the real concerns we have in certain parts of the city. The 8th District, and we saw this coming, was that although many of the people identify foreclosures as being people losing their homes, which is certainly a tragic situation, in many of the communities, the loss of multifamily residences is even more severe. Out on 65th Street in Van S, where Mr. Garcetti mentioned, we had two families. In fact, one apartment was a three-generational family in which they received this notice contrary to our rent stabilization law. But this is a fairness issue in that people that are paying their rent should not be put into a situation in which, because the landlord or the owner did not pay the note, that they then get evicted. I think it's also important that we find a way to clarify as to who they should pay, because that is another issue that has been, come to our attention, where people have paid the landlord, the landlord is left, and all of a sudden, the bank comes back on them. And so there is a need to clarify that. And I'd also ask, Mr. Garcetti, on this issue, just for clarification, is the intent, when this ordinance come back, and then that will be the hearing in the committee, or is it coming back directly to council? Committee? Okay. The only thing I'd ask also, in addition to that, is that because we have this ongoing rent stabilization study, that this ordinance go to that committee that's doing the study? Because this is a change in the current, or amendment to the current rent stabilization order to make sure that that information is part of their study?
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, I must say, you know, we did a lot of pomp and circumstances today, which is very important for the people that we honor and respect. But this is the issue. I'd like the City Attorney's Office to come up real quick. I want to ask them a couple of quick questions. Folks, we are in an economic recession. Some are even saying, as the market went down yesterday, it hasn't gone down further than this since the Great Depression. It's literally a huge national and international crisis among us. And we're all holding on to our seats. People my age have lost half of their 401Ks, half of their retirements. I'm one of them. A lot of people are nervous. People are being thrown out of their homes. People are losing their jobs by the hundreds of thousands. There are now over 4 million people unemployed, and every day, it's getting greater. As we get into the holiday season, there will be less shopping. People don't have the money. And everybody is worried about the future. This is as significant as it has ever gotten in the United States of America. City Attorney's Office, explain to us exactly what we're doing here, and how quickly can we move on this?
Judith Reel, Deputy City Attorney, you're providing limits on the grounds for eviction of tenants who reside in new buildings and in single-family dwellings when those properties are foreclosed. Right now, those protections exist only for buildings that are subject to the city's rent stabilization ordinance. This will expand the eviction control protection to persons who live in the foreclosed properties that are not otherwise governed by that ordinance.
Okay, so somebody watching this today who lives in one of those homes, how can they avoid being thrown out by somebody who just bought their house or their apartment building in foreclosure?
Well, right now, they can't. But if council adopts this ordinance, one is, they can refuse to move, and they will have a lawful defense to an eviction action. And secondly, I believe the ordinance would call for enforcement by LAHD so that the Los Angeles Housing Department, so that those tenants could complain to the Los Angeles Housing Department, just as tenants now do who reside in properties subject to the rent stabilization ordinance.
And I know it's going to go back to committee, but it's the end of, it's almost the end of November. Do you have any sense of how quickly we, as a city, can move on this for the obvious reasons that every single day, it's getting worse out there now, and people are very nervous?
Without making a binding promise, I can try and get it out of my office, I believe, within the next two weeks. We've got a bare-bones draft of an ordinance right now, but we want to make sure that the ordinance accurately captures the process, the foreclosure process that's going to be subject to this.
Has anybody looked at how many homes or apartment buildings in LA City are right now in foreclosure?
I don't, I have not, but perhaps the Los Angeles Housing Department, I believe, has.
Yeah, please.
Good morning, Councilman. Haka Mordesai, Housing Department. Actually, in the report that we just submitted, the number of foreclosures to date, there's approximately 1,240 properties with 3,600 units which have been foreclosed, which are subject to the city's RSO. There are 56 foreclosed multifamily properties with approximately 200 units which are exempt from the RSO. And in addition, there are 9,125 foreclosed single-family homes, a percentage of which are likely renter-occupied and which are also exempt from the RSO. So a total there would be, we're looking about 13,000, 12,500 properties.
12,000 or 13,000 properties, and that's growing daily, correct?
That's growing. We expect the number of foreclosures to increase, because within the next year, we expect a resetting of the adjusted-rate mortgages. And so, we do not believe that the foreclosure crisis is behind us. We expect the situation to actually be worsen.
And as it gets worse, and I agree with you, I mean, these are troubled times for the nation and the world. What can we do in sense of a verbal moratorium concept or get some message out there while we're processing this that you just can't throw people out? What can we do?
I think that the council, if it, certainly the Housing Department supports this motion, and by taking the step of enacting this motion or adopting this motion, I think that's a very clear signal to the lending institutions that serve the city of Los Angeles of the intent of the council and that properties not be vacated, that neighborhoods not be blighted by vacant properties, and that the situation be stabilized.
I hate to be muscling here, but, you know, we do a lot of things with banks. We're a great city. We have great ratings. We have lots of money in the context of pensions and so on. Is there some way we can leverage that right now and get these banks to appreciate it and potential people buying things in foreclosure to appreciate it and get them to stop?
The Housing Department has taken several steps in contacting banks about the existing protections which are there under the rent stabilization ordinance. We provided trainings for them, and we've also communicated them directly. We obviously can't do that with non-RSO exempt properties. If council adopts this motion and ultimately enacts the ordinance, we will then be able to approach them on that issue as well.
Can we approach them now as we're going forward and let them know we're in an emergency mode of considering it? And since we do so much good relations with these banks, please, don't let the horse run out of the barn? I mean, I want to be legal about this. I don't want to do anything illegal, but I certainly want to get the word out there. Don't mess with these people.
Well, I believe the Housing Department can certainly look into it, and our office would be giving them advice as to the parameters of the actions that they could take.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your articulation of the issue and the motion that went forward.
Thank you.
Worthwhile with on all this, once we go through this.
Mr. Race.
First, I want to thank my colleagues. They've covered a lot of the points that I wanted to raise, but in terms of information dissemination and how we connect with this international city, all the different languages, I know we're going through this process, but is there, are we working with nonprofits? Are we working with intermediaries? How are people going to be able to connect if they don't speak the language or if they're frail seniors? Have we thought about that?
Yes, we have. We certainly are working with nonprofit entities that you're talking about. Councilman Reyes, as you're aware, we have a RENESCO Account Program outreach contractors. One of the points that we discovered when looking at this crisis was that a significant portion of foreclosed properties have been placed into the RENESCO Account Program, which is further evidence of the deterioration which properties suffer when they're going through foreclosure. We've contacted them to provide additional information to tenants when they go out there to those foreclosed properties and to make them aware of their rights under the rent stabilization ordinance and that they cannot be evicted merely because the property has been foreclosed upon. We are also taking a look at how we can communicate directly to properties that are potentially subject to foreclosure and to communicate with them ahead of time so that the tenants can be made aware of their rights before any situation, before the situation reaches crisis point.
Great, you read my mind. I was going to, and we're limited to 199 letters. We can notify folks. And that's, and then if you're in a campaign mode, we're blacked out, so there's only so many things we can do. But if you're saying that you're looking at the possibility of reaching out to folks who are on this list, that would be one proactive way of trying to get to them before they're told to leave, correct?
That's correct, Councilman.
We have maps, and thanks to your department, we have a sense of scale of how dramatic this is, district by district. That was about a month ago. When can we get an updated map so that at least we can, at least each council office can have their own strategy in how they want to reach out and complimenting your work? Is that possible to get an updated version?
Yes, we're continuously working on updating and getting more recent data from our sources. We recently acquired the data for the third quarter, and we are incorporating those into our maps.
Great. I look forward to working with you on that. And thank you so much for the productivity. And again, thank you, Councilman Garcetti, and my colleagues, and moving forward. And las personas están aquí gracias por su paciencia. Es un día largo, pero es algo que estamos en crisis. Es importante compartir lo que está pasando ahora. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. I've seen that Mr. Sax, excuse me, Mr. Dowd has left the room. We'd like to take up items 1, 13, 14, and 20 that were called special based on those cards. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is item number seven, and there's a card on that item.
Mr. Sax, item number seven.
Again, thank you for starting the clock before I show up again. Communication from the Bureau of Street Lighting and Ordinance Intentions First Consideration relative to hearing for maintenance of a street lighting district. On the 18th, you had a maintenance hearing for the Mid-City Exposition Light Rail Transit Project. And I've come before City Council again numerous times asking to define that region. In today's LA Times, there's a story aiming for a makeover, and it designates a section of Washington Boulevard between La Brea and Venice Boulevards as the mid-city region of the city. The reason I bring this up is you have a mid-city exposition light rail transit project lighting district. So since the City Council has hearings regarding ordinances and intentions of first considerations, I'm curious to know when this city will have an ordinance hearing on the Gold Line that runs from Union Station through Pasadena, the section that runs through City Council districts, or the East Side Extension, or the Red Line, or the Purple Line? According to the item on your agenda, this lighting district, the Mid-City Exposition Lighting District, will create $43,000, almost $44,000 in fees annually. I understand the city's in a budget conflict, crisis. If the city can create funding for a mid-city exposition line lighting district, which we don't know what is, why can it not create funding for other light rail transit project lighting districts?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sax.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Next item is item 18. Mr. Sax, you are the speaker. Card on item number 18.
Thank you again, item 18. I have no standing either way on this initiative. If it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, the people vote it. The problem I see here is that the party that lost this election is claiming a loophole in the process of putting the ballot on, the item on the ballot for vote. You can be sure that however this turns out in front of the State Supreme Court, and the United States Supreme Court, if it's overturned, there'll be another challenge. If it's not overturned, there'll be another election. That's the right that the public has. The question is, the general public in total is paying for these fees to fight these initiatives. At one time, at what time could the legal process be developed to answer these questions before they get to the ballot to save the public some funds that could be better used or better directed to help the public to understand exactly, in plain English, when a no vote is a no, and a yes vote is a yes, and not a no vote is a yes, and a yes vote is a no? If you spend the money beforehand in prevention or cure, then maybe you saved some money after the fact instead of revisiting it over and over and over again?
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl?
Just to clarify this, and thank you, colleagues, this is a motion we put forward that joins with the county, joins with legislators in Sacramento, joins with the governor and others who feel that the 8th amendment that was passed by the voters is unconstitutional and is a basic civil rights violation. What people need to understand is that everyone in America should get a civil marriage certificate who intends to have a committed relationship. And they can take that civil marriage certificate if they want and get it blessed or not blessed by any other group. But you see, the word "marriage" within the context of the law talks about inheritance rights, hospital visitation rights, social security rights, health care issues, immigration issues if your committed partner is from a foreign country. It's a basic civil rights issue of committed relationships. So this is discrimination against our Constitution. Even if the voters were misled, misunderstood, and voted yes, it needs to go through a process that talks about civil marriage. So I thank my colleagues for this motion, So I thank my colleagues for this motion, and obviously, I ask for unanimous support.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you as well, Mr. Rosendahl. We had led quite a rally here on Saturday, here in our civic center in Los Angeles, and clearly, people have been speaking out, taking to the streets literally about this issue. We're pleased to see that the Supreme Court has taken it up here in the state of California, but we certainly are at a moment where we all know that we need not less, but more love in this world, that we see the ability for the state, it's kind of a perverse moment when the state can take away rights with a majority vote, and yet, we get a 65% vote to add more after-school programs and save lives with gang prevention, and that doesn't pass because that requires two-thirds. There seems to be inversion of values and inversion of what is best. The city of Los Angeles has taken this position time and time again. About seven years, we've taken a position for marriage equality, both through the legislative process, and also when this has been on the ballot. So this is within our purview, and it's one that the State Supreme Court hopefully will listen to. Many of us performed wedding ceremonies in which partners who have been together for 20 or 30 years were finally able to legally have the same rights as everybody else, nothing special, nothing more, but just the same. And it's encouraging to see the breakdown of the votes, to know that it's just a matter of time before we get to marriage equality, if we have to go back to the ballot box. But in the meantime, we hope the courts will continue with the progress that they made in making sure that California is a place where everyone is equal, no matter what their religion, what their background is, and whom they love, that at a moment when we need more love in the world, this is a good step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Alacon?
Members, I'm told that 60% of my district voted for Prop. 8. And I'm very conscious, as you are, about what your district believes and what they don't believe, and nevertheless, I think that civil rights is not something that has been supported by a majority of the population over the course of the years. Indeed, it is the minority that have supported expanding our civil rights, whether it be for women, for minorities, or whatever the category of expanding civil rights is, it's typically the minority that fights the battle. And quite often, we find ourselves in court because we are challenged to define civil rights sometimes in a way that is consistent with our Constitution. The matters that go to the ballot are not always clear on these issues. It is not, it is not the court of public opinion that has driven necessarily our civil rights. They work hand in hand, but typically, it is, it is the opinion of a minority of people that drive the courts to the correct position. If anyone would challenge the women's right to vote today, they would be thought to be insane. If anybody would challenge the right of African-Americans to have access to the voter booths, they would be called insane. Let's think of this not in terms of where we are today, in terms of public opinion, but let's think of where we will be in 20 years, because I have no doubt that in 20 years, people will be saying the same thing. Who would think that we would deny two people who love each other the right to get marriage, to be married? And so, I don't like disagreeing with my district, but occasionally, you have to stand up and say that, yes, I serve the minority as well as the majority, and in this case, I believe it is in the interest of the general public, and in particular, those who are of the LGBT community, that they should have the right to be married. So any opportunity to challenge us, to take us to a new level of civil rights, to take us to a new level of compassion, I believe we ought to take it. And so I commend Councilmember Garcetti for introducing this motion.
Actually, a Gru, Garcetti, Rosendahl motion.
I had one second.
Thank you. And Mr. Labonge, I wanted, just because I did introduce the motion to, I know we are potentially, we've lost a quorum, support this and move forward, and to support all the comments of my colleagues. So, Mr. Labonge, you have something you want to say before we vote on the item?
I rise and support this, thank you, and let's call for the question.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Garcetti, for a quick introduction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to introduce, my rabbi from Oxford is here, as somebody who you might have seen on television and his radio show, Rabbi Shmuley Botek, who is a native of Los Angeles, now lives in New Jersey, but who is here with us today. Just wanted to welcome him and his guest, Rachel Hunter, to our chambers, it's an honor to have you both here. We thank you for the work that you're doing as well, he's been an inspiration to me since I was a student, and makes us proud as an Angelino as well, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Madam President, there are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, there's, Madam President, there is a special one.
Okay. We actually need to vote on this other item as well first. If we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Did we vote on that already? Did we open the roll? Okay. We went quicker.
Madam President, it's special one is the next thing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, special one.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the state has notified the city staff that a second Tefra hearing is required to secure conduit financing for the establishment of a charter school in Lakeview Terrace. Immediate action is required in order to provide the 15-day notice of the Tefra hearing on December 8th, so as to meet the California Municipal Finance Authority's deadlines. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2, before considering the substance of the motion.
Do we have anyone who'd like to comment on the findings? If not, this item is now before us. We have to vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon?
Members, the item before us relates to the operation of the Puck Academy School in Lakeview Terrace. We used an opportunity to use a technical element to allow them to essentially borrow money by using our credit. Without getting into all the detail, this is an opportunity for them to finish their construction on the project. They've been performing incredible feats at that school. In fact, I believe Councilmember Cardenas has at least one child at the school, maybe two, I can't keep up with all his kids, but in any case, this is a very innovative, a unique way to use our credit to allow for a public benefit corporation, in this case, the Puck Academy, to expand its services to our community, and I urge your support.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, there are excuses on the desk.
Please go ahead.
Councilmember Gru requests to arrive at 10:15 on December 5th, arrive at 10:30 on December 12th and 16th, arrive at 11:00 a.m. on December 2nd for personal business, and to leave at 11:00 a.m. on December 9th, and to be excused on January 20th for city business. This meets policy.
Thank you. Any other, next items?
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused on December 5th for city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Councilmember Smith requests to leave at 12:00 noon on November 25th for city business, this meets policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to leave at 12:00 noon on December 3rd for personal business, this meets policy.
He'll be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Announcements, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, I have a very special announcement. A good friend, longtime colleague is getting married today, Tony Pettis, with a fellow city worker, Martha Vaca, and that will happen this afternoon, and so I want to say to the whole public, yes, it is Tony Pettis. So, it's great.
And you're officiating.
And I'm officiating.
Oh, great, wonderful.
Very special.
Wonderful.
Congratulations, Tony, congratulations, Martha.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Congratulations to that, and to you, Minister, I am looking forward to your ceremony there. I just want to announce that an incredible event is taking place on Tuesday, the 2nd of December, and it is the Biona Institute honoring an amazing group of people that have done something with the wetlands, you know. Our local hero is the mayor, Antonio Villarosa, the state heroes are the Honorable Deborah Bowen, Kathleen Connell, Steve Wesley, and Tom Hayden, and especially tying it with journalists in this moment in time, which is what we should be tying ourselves always together, is J. William Gibson, David Helvack, Mary Moore, Pat Morrison, Robert Shear, and Jill Stewart. So we urge you to support this event, it will be at the Ritz Carlton Hotel on Tuesday, the 2nd of December. Standing right next to me is Marcia Hanscom, who's a co-director of the Biona Institute, has put this together, so I urge everybody to go. Thank you for that announcement, and Madam President, one last personal announcement, Thanksgiving is next week, I'm pleased that I've been able to go back east to Arlo Guthrie's house for Thanksgiving, and we're going to be serving the poor, but on Saturday, Pete Seeger is going to do his very last concert at 89-years-old at Carnegie Music Center, so it's an honor for me to go back, and on behalf of the city, we're going to present Pete Seeger a resolution, thanking him for his commitment to community and all the wonderful things he has done, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Colleagues, we have lost a quorum, so we may not be adjourning, do adjourning motions today, but for those of you that are on the Transportation Committee meeting, we will be going directly up to the committee meeting now to begin our meeting.